Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Hunt, call the September 15th Council Study Session to order. Before we move on to tonight's agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. On March 6th, the mayor issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act. The proclamation has been extended through October 1st. Tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting or to make comments. There are multiple public comments opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you may reserve your comments until after the council question-and-answer period on tonight's agenda item. However, public comments will not be taken following the Providence Heights School informational update as council feedback is not being sought on this topic this evening. Some individuals have signed up in advance to make comments. If there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments but did not sign up, please press *3 on your phone now, and we will call on you using a portion of your phone number shortly. I will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember Dee Michelle?
Here.
Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Martz?
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thank you. In addition, the following city staff are participating in tonight's meeting. City Administrator Wally Bobquitz, Community Planning and Development Director Keith Niven, Finance Director Beth Goldberg, Human Services and Social Sustainability Coordinator Monica Negrilla, Management Analyst Jeremy Brecker-Himson, City Attorney Jim Haney, and Deputy City Clerk Tisha Geiser. Other city staff may also be in attendance and on hand for questions. A few representatives of the Issaquah School District are also on hand to respond to questions on Agenda Item 2C. When recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and please re-mute your microphone when done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? Yes, the first person who signed up is Dave Osmar. Dave, I've unmuted you.
No, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to Council President Hunt for a nice email she sent back to me acknowledging my written comments for your meeting. I just wanted to, since you're not taking comments after 2C, I wanted to add them now, and thank you for the opportunity. A couple of my concerns in my written comments, if you haven't had a chance to see those, the primary ones were the concern that the staff report that you received did not include any mention of the pending ruling by the State Growth Management Earrings Board, which will be rendered sometime prior to or on October 13th. And the other thing that wasn't in the staff report was the letter from the city of Sumamish to the Issaquah School District, which I know got forwarded to, or CC'd to, the mayor, Mr. Niven, and the city manager. Last but not least, I wanted to ask a question that hopefully will get answered during your discussion. The staff report on page three under "Next Steps" indicates that the city staff will review and render decisions on any proposed adjustments of standards. So my question is, how does the public submit any comments on those proposed adjustments to standards? So hopefully, if someone could answer that question during the discussion, I would appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Tisha, is there anyone else wanting to speak on this item?
Yes, the next person who signed up to speak is Superintendent Deely, who I don't see on the line. Superintendent, if you are on the line, please press *3 on your phone, which will indicate to me that you're here and wishing to speak. Okay, I see you've raised your hand, so I'll unmute you now.
Thank you. I hope everybody can hear me okay. Appreciate the opportunity to give a few comments here today. I thought I would focus my comments on our efforts to communicate with our neighbors related to our Providence Heights project, because I know that was a concern that we heard about last year. What I wanted to share is that the district is committed to working with our neighbors in the surrounding communities, including Providence Point, in attempts to address concerns and provide updates and accurate project information. We've engaged with representatives of the Providence Point Umbrella Association in a number of forums to hear these concerns. We participated with the mayor and city staff in settlement discussions with the Providence Point Umbrella Association prior to the council's decision on the comprehensive plan, re-designation, rezone. We met after that, President Marty Maraldo, and past President Harlan Gallinger, and myself, with the PPUA representatives. We met actually three times, twice in January and once in February. We participated in structured mediation over a period of nearly two months as part of the Growth Management Hearing Board proceedings. Well-known settlement has been reached in response to what we heard. I did want to point out that we have voluntarily directed modifications to the design beyond the minimum code requirement. We have set aside nearly six acres of the site, not including the buffer along 228th Avenue Northeast. It is planned, that is planned as a buffer, left either with existing vegetation and revegetation as part of the development, with an average buffer of 60 feet around the neighbors' properties. Additional berming and landscaping has been added beyond code requirements in the areas that we understood to be of the highest in terms of view concerns from the neighbors. Tree retention and landscaping in our plan exceeds minimum code requirements. Buildings and facilities have been oriented in a manner designed to minimize the impacts to the surrounding properties. And just to point, this is an underdeveloped urban site with no recorded covenants or casements on the property that would require the retention of open space or trees or expanded buffers. However, we believe that these design features are an important component of the project, given what we've heard from our neighbors. And then lastly, I just wanted to note, recently had an email exchange in contact with the new PPA UA president. Just having reached out to the previous president to check in, there'd been kind of a period of time where we hadn't talked much during the COVID, the initial COVID outbreak. But anyway, just wanted to remind the council, there's been lots of communication and work, and that will continue. As I know I've said publicly many times, we want to be a good neighbor to all the surrounding communities around our facility. So again, thank you to the council for this opportunity to take this input tonight. Appreciate it. Hope you're all doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Geiser, is there anyone else who has indicated wishing to speak?
Yes, next is Suzanne Weaver. Suzanne, I've unmuted you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Suzanne Weaver. I live in the city of Sumamish, but I sit on the Issaquah School Board. The superintendent and I apparently got our wires crossed, because he just addressed all of the points I was going to address, and I'm going to try to talk about what I thought he was talking about, which is the site location and why the district chose the Providence Heights site for its elementary 17 and high school 4. The district followed adopted countywide planning policies and the county and city's collective direction for school siting. The 2012 amendments to the King County countywide planning policies require that all new schools be built inside of the urban growth area boundary. Currently, 70% of the land base of the district is outside of the UGA, and we also lost the ability to use 80 acres of land just outside the UGA boundary that we had long been planning to use for future schools. We worked with a professional real estate broker in the years before and after the 2016 bond to search for viable urban school sites. Over 700 acres of potentially workable sites were reviewed. Much of that acreage had development constraints or complicated property assemblages. This site at Providence Heights, under contract at that time for the development of nearly 150 single-family homes, was the only viable urban site for a high school program of any kind. With more than 40 developable urban acres, it also fit the service area need for a new elementary school. Most importantly, it is located in an area that will allow us to relieve service area pressures at both the elementary and high school levels, since the vast majority of our district growth right now is in the north and central areas of the district. We agree that building new schools inside the urban area is challenging, both in terms of finding available land and because it's often, because it's often a use of underdeveloped land. However, we also know that this is what is required of us, and that our schools can be designed to fit within our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's signed up to speak?
Yes, and before I announce the next caller, I see we have a few other members of the public who've joined us by phone. If you are interested in making comments tonight, please press *3 on your phone to indicate that to us. The next person who signed up to speak is Sydney Mullings, and Sydney, I've unmuted you.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Hi, thanks for letting me join tonight and provide my commentary. So I'm Sydney Mullings. I'm a school board director in Issaquah. I'm also an Issaquah resident. I live in the Highlands, and I'm a parent of two children in Issaquah schools. My children are both square in the demographic for this discussion tonight, and so what I wanted to do is join and just give my thoughts about the overall need for schools in the district. So I have a brand-new high school freshman, as well as a fifth grader at Grand Ridge. So a quick recap about the need. First and foremost, we had a fully voter-supported and passed construction bond in 2016. It was overwhelmingly approved by voters, and in it, we included the need for a 17th elementary school, as well as a 4th comprehensive high school. And so this project is acting out on that, on that will. We have rapid growth, as Suzanne just covered, and I know, as you all know, in your role, especially in this part of the district, but I think it's important to kind of personalize that a little bit. With Sunny Hills having over 800 students in that single elementary school, Clark Creekside and Briarwood all at around 700, it really is a significant issue that we have of students in schools. And if you look at our existing high schools, we have schools that were built for 1,800 students, with Issaquah High School having over 2,200, and Skyline over 2,000. And those numbers are just going to continue to increase. And what's important about the site, as Suzanne mentioned, is that it's really ideally located between those two schools, and will go a long way in reducing the overcrowding in those schools, as well as traffic around both of those locations. I know there's been previous conversations about, will we offer a different kind of academic program, or a different kind of extracurricular opportunity? But it's really important that in our high schools, we're providing an equitable experience across them, and a smaller choice school, as an example I know has been raised in the past, would not meet our enrollment needs. It's also not what the voters approve. There's also been a lot of discussion around fields and sort of sports amenities, but it's important to know that busing students athletes to other schools is really not practical or feasible, with other facilities being fully booked and scheduled, with the look at time and expense of busing, which is quite expensive cost, as well as actually adding to the traffic and congestion. So I know you're in good hands in hearing more about the project as you have your discussion tonight, and those are all the comments that I wanted to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Tisha, please call the next speaker.
Yes, next we have Kristi Triple. Kristi, I've unmuted you.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and city team members. I hope you are all well. Kristi Triple, speaking this evening on behalf of Rowley Properties here in Issaquah at 1595 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, Suite 1. I'm speaking this evening to ID 70743. You've heard from me prior on this topic, as you've been exploring a local defense against eviction. As a council, you've done individual good work in looking at this topic through your lens in just a few short months. At the same time, there's also been hard work in collaboration with subject matter experts at the state and county level, and with the state's moratorium, as well as the CDC's most recent moratorium on eviction. It doesn't seem additional need locally to recreate the wheel to accomplish the aspiration of supporting those who may be faced with an eviction. I understand when you first started this dialogue, there were a lot more unknowns and for some fear. For example, unemployment was projected to be, at that time, 19.20% by the end of September, as outlined in the ordinance tonight. It is no longer the case today. The Washington State Economic and Revenue Forecast August Report states that July's unemployment rate was 10.3%. That's almost less than half of what was anticipated. Thankfully, a lot of positives have happened in these past few short months, despite the fact we remain in Phase 2. As a reminder on this topic, every landlord must follow the landlord-tenant law. Yes, there may be a few bad seeds here and there, though I doubt here in Issaquah. If they are not following the current legal requirement, how is that you, as a local municipality, propose to enforce compliance with your proposed ordinance if it is passed? The point being, this is a complex topic and one typically not in your purview, which has come through in your discussions. In observation, there's been a lot of unclear direction by the whole. I get it, as this is hard stuff, and we all want to do good, but this enforcement or funding of such is not a city responsibility. It is time to reframe the conversation and look to the governmental jurisdictions who are responsible and can enforce housing eviction. I ask that you please not rush this conversation by creating an unfair burden on the very folks who are working hard to provide housing for our citizens. Future-oriented, if the circumstances warranted a later date, then pick this topic back up. But for now, I think there's many who are working very diligently to address the concern and issues associated with housing evictions during the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you again for all of your work, care, and service. I appreciate it, as I know the community does as well. Lastly, one other topic I wanted to comment on, I wanted to share, I loved seeing the recommendations for performance measures in 2021. Good stuff, and I look forward to hearing more later on the agenda tonight. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Tisha, please call the next speaker.
Yes, I see the caller with the last two digits 99 has an interest in speaking. I've unmuted you. Caller with the last two digits 99. Are you there? I've unmuted you. You may need to also unmute your phone. And I'm going to try one more time. Caller with the last two digits 99.
I'm sorry, I can't figure out the phone.
I can hear you now. Please identify yourself and begin your comments.
My name is Elizabeth Mulchett. I've been a resident of Issaquah since about 1982. I'm an unpaid advocate who works with people who have low income, and I am very interested in the proposal for the eviction, eviction defense project. I'm not sure if I'm getting through, but...
We can hear you. We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. The idea of having mediation prior to going to an eviction process is an excellent idea. I haven't been able to read through all of your proposals. I know that there is one that's been put to the Supreme Court justices, and I hope that this comes to pass. It would include King County and be very helpful, but even if it doesn't come to pass, I would love to see something like this in Issaquah with a win-win possibility for both landlords and tenants. It costs landlords a whole lot to go into an eviction process. This could avoid that. It would avoid eviction being on people's records. And the more we can do in mediation, the less overloaded our courts will be. And I commend you for looking ahead, planning ahead, and not waiting until we have a tsunami of people who are being called to pay up on rent that they're way behind on. We could end up with an awful lot of people living in the forests around Issaquah if we don't take reasonable action to keep our residents out. So I commend you for what you're doing. If there's any way I can help, call on me.
Thank you. Tisha, please call the next speaker.
Yes, I see the caller with the last two digits 07 has an interest in speaking. I've unmuted you.
Okay, hi, this is Connie Marsh, and I live up on Squawk. And so I'm sort of torn between Elizabeth and Kristi Triple in their comments. Elizabeth's boots on the ground, and she knows when and where people are hurting, and Kristi has a handle on an overarching hierarchy and having it be more than just the city taking on such a huge responsibility. And so I agree with Kristi that it needs to be larger than the city, but I agree with Elizabeth that people do hurt, and we need to be able to direct them to resources to help them. Though I don't necessarily think that that should be entirely the city's responsibility to do that, and instead, we need to fit our puzzle piece into the statewide and county-wide structure. And having listened to it all, I still don't understand how our puzzle piece fits in, so clarity is necessary for me on that. And then to move on to the schools. So I listened to the neighborhood meeting, and there were a few things that struck me, and that was that the people who were describing the schools said, yes, we're going to take down most of the trees, and then we're going to plant them and make a neighbor, make a forest. And for me, you have 80-year-old trees on site that you are going to cut down and then replant with your typical, what, 12-inch to four-foot-high trees? And they're calling that a buffer. To me, a buffer is a retained tree buffer, not a buffer that you expect to be mature in 40 years, right? And so the language is super important when you listen to the conversation between the community and the school district in this. And the Sumamish Council letter conquered it, I thought, pretty realistically. So I would cast a good eyeball on that letter, because you are in this awkward jurisdictional situation where you're building in the city, but your impacts are to your next-door neighbor city, and so there needs to be a conversation about what are the best rules to use. For example, the city of Sumamish has stronger standards for stormwater, because they're used to building up on the hill, and the hillside water flows down rapidly. The city is more used to building on the flatland, and so our addendum for our stormwater manual, I know I'm speaking gibberish, but our addendum for our stormwater manual addresses our flatland restrictions like flooding more than it does our steep slope erosion-type situations. So in this situation, the Sumamish rules are actually better fit for the consequences of the school. And then one last topic that I think is just the most amazing, which is, the plan at this point is to reduce the FAR, yet immediately just put in portables, because they know that they are not going to have the capacity in the school, and they're going to immediately have to use portables. So when people say, boy, we need more schools, we know that's true, but we need schools that are not undersized as soon as they open, thereby requiring portables. So that does not seem like a success at this point in time. It's more important to have classrooms than it is to have boarding facilities. So why reduce your FAR if you could not reduce your FAR and have the right number of classrooms? Anyway, you can see, I'm again perplexed, and I don't do well at being perplexed, so you know I'm just going to sort of gnaw on that, like the little rat in the corner endlessly going, what? I don't get it. So I'm going to let you guys get that little gnawing sensation in your brain tonight as you go through Mr. Niven's presentation, and I hope you have a lot of fun with that. I will have fun watching you all. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Tisha, please call the next speaker.
There's no one else on the call who's indicated a desire to speak, but one more opportunity, if you'd like to make comments tonight and haven't already, please press *3 on your phone. Also, if I could ask Ron and Connie to please press *3 on their phones to lower their hands. Appreciate it. And I don't see that anyone else has indicated a desire to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will now move into ID 0743, which is the Housing Stability Local Defense Against
Council President, if I could perhaps provide some initial comments?
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council President, members of the council, good evening. The first item you have before you deals with the Housing Stability Local Defense Against Evictions. This is perhaps the third time this has come before you. We have on your agenda two items. One is further revisions to an ordinance that you have already taken a look at, and what we've done is met, the city administration has met with the ad hoc to go through that along with City Attorney Jim Haney. Mr. Haney is with us this evening, and I'd like to ask him in a moment to walk through that ordinance, and then any questions you might have for him. The second part of the presentation is a report from Monica Negrilla, dealing with further information gathering we have done regarding mediation services. These are standalone items. The ordinance, of course, is something the council may choose to move forward with, but so is mediation. And if you would choose to not move forward with the ordinance at this time, or wait for a later time to do that, the mediation would still be an option for you. So as the council is discussing these matters, I want to make that point at the outset. As I think many of you are aware, Mr. Haney represents other jurisdictions and has a... As I think many of you are aware, Mr. Haney represents other jurisdictions and has another city council meeting to get to this evening at 7:30. So he'll be leading us at about 7:25. So Madam President, if we could have Mr. Haney speak to the ordinance right now, perhaps get any questions there are about the ordinance, and then we can perhaps see what time that is. I know that Mr. Haney would also be useful for the initial discussion regarding Providence Point if we have the ability to include him in that grade. If not, we'll go on without him. So, Mr. Haney, if you could come on and talk a little bit about the ordinance and any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Good evening. I think as the council knows, the ad hoc committee met and provided direction on the previous ordinance. I attempted in the draft, which you have in front of you, to incorporate the ad hoc committee's direction. I'm not completely sure that, that I did everything that the ad hoc committee had requested or that, but I haven't received any feedback yet. So tonight is an opportunity for you to look at it and then give me some feedback before you consider this ordinance further. I think just walking through the changes, and you've seen this ordinance before, the changes in the title are just to indicate what has changed in the ordinance such that when the city clerk publishes a summary of the ordinance, she can publish the title, and that can serve as the summary. So that, that's really the reason why the title got changed. More importantly, turning to Section 1 of the ordinance, I think there was a desire from the ad hoc committee, as I understood it, to lay out a little more closely. And I borrowed this mainly from the draft from the Housing Association to lay out a little more, a little more detail, the situations in which, due to COVID-19, there would be cause for a tenant to assert that they could not pay rent. So in subsection 1A, that's the intent of that subsection is to lay out those circumstances under which a tenant can make that claim. The next major substantive change is, well, and let me just back up for a second with respect to subsection A. One of the issues that the ad hoc committee was trying to address, as I understood it, was to have a sunset date for this ordinance. As you'll recall, the previous ordinance talked about, the previous language indicated that the, if a tenant could show during the period of the civil emergency declared by Mayor Polly, and up until the time that the civil emergency ended, if the tenant could show that the COVID-19 had affected them and had made it so that they could not pay their rent on time, the tenant would have a defense. One of the things that you'll see throughout this ordinance is that the period is now between March 1, 2020, which is essentially when Mayor Polly and the governor declared the emergency. And the sunset date is set as when King County enters Phase 4 of the, of the governor's safe start, stay healthy plan. And that was my understanding of what the ad hoc committee had decided on the sunset date should be. So now the ordinance directly addresses both a beginning date of March 1 and a sunset date of the date that the county goes into Phase 4. With respect to subsection C, the next substantive change in Section 1, the ad hoc committee wanted some language in here to recognize or to have the court recognize that the court should balance equities and should consider the impacts to the owners and landlords, as well as consider the impacts to the tenant of, of the issues. So that is the language that was suggested by the housing industry, and that's the language that the ad hoc committee requested be included. Again, Section D just makes the change relating to the, the sunset date, the beginning date and the sunset date. So that's the only, only change there. The same in Section 2 of the ordinance regarding late fees. Again, the language has just changed to reflect the beginning date and the sunset date. In Section 3, I inserted the requirement that the parties participate in an eviction resolution program if one is established by the courts. And as I think Monica will cover, or you may already know, the Washington Supreme Court has been working on a program called the Eviction Resolution or ERP Program, which it has been putting together. It is not yet finalized. We have seen some drafts of that, that program. And so I left the language a little loose in the sense that I did provide that if the program was established and if the landlord and tenant were eligible to participate in the program, then they would have to use the program before proceeding to court, and that there would be a defense by the tenant if the landlord refused to participate in the program, and it would not be a defense if the landlord wanted to participate and the tenant refused. So I phrased it that way because we still don't have a final version of the court's program, so we weren't sure exactly what the requirements were going to be. In Section 4, we, we looked at the payment plan issue, and my understanding is the, the ad hoc committee did not want the payment plan requirements to be as prescriptive as they were in the previous ordinance. And so what I tried to do here, and I guess everybody will tell me if I did what the, what the ad hoc committee was looking for, was to provide that the landlord and tenant needed to enter into a reasonable payment plan. The plan had to be in writing, and that the plan had to be reasonable under the circumstances, and then made the previous payment plan, which was outlined as one which is presumptively reasonable, but which the parties could decide on something else. And again, if the landlord fails to offer the plan, the tenant has a defense in the eviction. If the landlord offers the plan and the tenant refuses to agree, then there, it would not be a defense for the tenant. The next major change was to insert a new Section 5 relating to mediation. And this provides that if mediation services are available and affordable to the parties, then participation in mediation is a requirement. Now, the ERP program, the eviction resolution program, does have a meet and confer process and so forth that could work, kind of like mediation and facilitate that. But if that process is not available and things are not resolved there, then this section would require mediation as long as it was available and affordable. And I was cognizant of the fact that the city council has not yet committed to funding a mediation program, although there, that certainly is one of the things that are on the table for you. So I simply provided that the city intends to provide funding for it, and if it does and mediation is available, then the parties would have to use it. In what is now the new Section 6, termination and retaliation prohibited, the only real change, changes there were to conform the ordinance again to having a beginning date and a sunset date. I eliminated what was Section 5 in the previous ordinance, which related to the termination or ability to terminate rental agreements. It was, as I understood it, a, the will of the majority of the ad hoc committee to, to delete that section. And so you can see in the draft that it is now deleted. I have inserted a new subsection 7, which again details the sunset date of the ordinance and provides that the ordinance automatically sunsets when King County enters Phase 4. The ordinance does provide, though, that just because you go into Phase 4 doesn't relieve the landlord or tenant from complying with any payment plan, which had already been entered into. And I think Councilmember De Michele raised a question to me over email, which the council might consider, which is if, which I believe is whether the, the sunsetting of the ordinance, whether you want to sunset the ordinance entirely such that none of its remedies are available once Phase 4 occurs, even though the delinquency in rent may have occurred during Phases 1, 2, or 3. So that's something for the council to consider and discuss. The last major change is in Section 9. And as I understand it, rather than having this be an emergency ordinance and putting it into effect immediately, the will of the ad hoc committee was to have the ordinance going to affect only if Governor Inslee's proclamations relating to evictions lapsed or expired. And so this ordinance would not apply as long as Governor Inslee's moratorium on evictions was in effect. And currently, that, I believe, is extended through, I want to say, October 15. And then Governor Inslee will make a determination at that point whether he extends it further. I did not try to tie this ordinance to the CDC's eviction moratorium. I did take a look at that eviction moratorium that the CDC has put into effect, and it, assuming that they have the authority to do it, and I, I am not completely sure on that, but assuming they have authority to do it, there is currently a, a moratorium on evictions from the CDC that lasts through December 31 of this year. So that is, that is the CDC moratorium. So that's basically the changes that I made, and happy to hear any direction or input from, that the city council may have as to whether you want to move forward with this, and if so, if I've captured the appropriate terms that the ad hoc committee requested.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. I, I think first, are there any councilmembers that have questions? If you could please indicate in the chat. Okay, we have a question from Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Council President, my question is around the mandatory nature of a potential eviction resolution program. Two things. Was that the, the will of the ad hoc committee? And is that where we were when last week talked? It wasn't, I, I'm not sure I remember that we were in favor of a mandatory program. That's the first question. And the second question is, I noticed that the Bellevue Conflict Resolution Center does voluntary mediation, which I'm assuming then that an eviction resolution program would be with somebody else since, since they, since it would be mandatory. So can you expand a little bit on the mandatory and where that came from? Because I, I'm, I'm not sure that's what I remember the council saying.
Well, and, and perhaps I've gotten it wrong, but my understanding is that the, the intention of the court is to make that a requirement before parties go into eviction proceedings. So that's something that my understanding was that, from the ad hoc committee and the notes I received, was that the, the committee wanted that worked into the ordinance if that was available. But if I'm wrong, I'd be happy to make any change that, that the council wants. And Ms. Negrilla may have more information on exactly the program. She and I, she and I spent some time talking about it, and the materials that came out regarding that program are not very reader-friendly, but we do know that the Supreme Court and the Superior Courts are working on that program to be a mandate.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Negrilla, please go ahead.
Good evening. This is Monica Negrilla. Thank you so much. I do have a little bit of more information about the mandated program, indeed, that is a program created by the courts for the courts. And when implemented, it's also my understanding that it has a mandatory impact. And yes, the Bellevue Resolution Center works on a voluntary basis, although right now they are also, they are also DRC, which is a dispute resolution center working under the umbrella of the Washington Resolution Center, the state umbrella. And there are discussions that they may have to take some overflow cases from the King County Resolution Center, who will be the main entity implementing the court program. At this time, though, you are correct, Councilmember Martz, that the Bellevue Resolution Center works primarily with volunteer cases. And so when implemented, the, the mandatory program will work with the King County DRC. I hope that helps a bit.
Sorry, no, yeah, thank, thank you, President Hunt. No, I, I guess the question really was for the ad hoc committee and whether this came from the ad hoc committee or from feedback that we got, or, I, I just don't remember the mandatory. I remember the conversation not requiring a mandatory resolution mechanism. So I'm just trying to understand where and how it, it came about, and if that reflected the ad hoc committee, because I didn't get that from the material.
And I see that Councilmember De Michele would like to make clarification. Is that in regard to this question? Yes, okay. Councilmember De Michele.
Thanks. I, I remember clearly saying at the last time we were discussing this, that we didn't want anything to prohibit a landlord and tenant from entering into informal conversations. And in Section 4, which is on page 14 in our packet, it says, if I can read through all those strikeouts, unless the landlord has offered and the tenant has refused or failed to comply with the reasonable payment plan pursuant to this section. That could be an inform, as I understand the reading of that Section 4, that could be an informal offer from the landlord to the tenant, which would obviate going to either mediation or to eviction court. So Jim, maybe you can look at that. I'm trying to look at what the line is, but I can't see it. But it's about 10 lines down in Section 4.
So the question is for Jim regarding interpretation of that line? Am I correct?
Yeah, exactly. I, the way that I read it, at any rate, it, we would not be mandating in every case. The first step, if a, if a landlord wanted to approach a tenant and just offer a payment plan without either mediation or going to eviction, that would be our, the first preferred step. That's my reading of that. I don't know whether Jim would agree with it or not.
I think certainly if the landlord and tenant agreed on a payment plan and had an agreement, there would be no need for a dispute resolution process between them. So yes, that is there. And the intent of Section 4 is, is simply to provide the tenant with a defense if the landlord fails to, to offer a reasonable payment plan to the tenant. And to answer Councilmember Martz's question, I guess, and maybe I misread the, the ad hoc committee's notes, but I don't recall that the ad hoc committee, I think the ad hoc committee had indicated that they wanted mediation as a defense, an agenda bill that includes a proposed ordinance and mediation as a defense. that includes a proposed ordinance and mediation as a defense against eviction. And so that's why I drafted it that way, was to, to, to be able to make it a defense against eviction. But again, I'm happy to, to change it. Didn't have a lot of time to meet with the committee after the notes were provided and, and the fleshed out notes were provided in order to get this ordinance out, and wanted to get it out into the packet as quickly as possible.
Does that address your questions, Councilmember Martz?
No, I'm sorry, it doesn't. I'm still, I'm still wondering if the, if the intent of, I get the sense of the intent of the Ad Hoc Committee and all the other line items and all the other facets of this bill, but is it the intent of the Ad Hoc Committee that there should be mandatory mediation before a potential defense against eviction?
So I will, I think actually we have a comment in response from Councilmember Hall, and then I will also comment. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Zach Hall. I was just going back through my notes, Councilmember Martz, and I think the way to think of this is, the defense to eviction is the foundation of this whole thing, but we wanted, we had a, had a conversation in a previous meeting, and we wanted to have a step before that, so people didn't have to appear before court to give their defense to eviction, and that appears on your record. So there are several pathways, it's a very comprehensive ordinance. There are several pathways that you can go down here. One of them is that you end up with required mediation. Yeah, and that's to keep, to keep you away from having to provide your defense in court without, you know, one more step. And I remember us having a conversation about having that one more step. If anyone else wants to correct me, that's what I remember.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I, I think that's all correct. I would add that we also, in the last meeting, so the Ad Hoc, we tried to build on notes that were taken by the clerks during our last study session, and then we tried to add where there was a lack of clarity, we tried to add additional information. So this was one area where it, we, we added some additional guidance. And part of it was that we heard in the last meeting the desire to include mediation, and one of the reasons why would be that if you, if you are offered mediation and you choose not to go through with that mediation, as was mentioned in the memo by Councilmembers Goodman and Ray, one, one reason you might not want to be going into mediation would be if you are an elective nonpayer, which is not the group of people that we're hoping to protect with this. So we included it as mandatory so that it's, so you have to at least agree to mediation before you would go, you would be able to have the defense against eviction, and that would be one way to prevent the elective nonpayers from just going through the process and, and going straight to the defense against eviction. Okay. Councilmember Martz, does that address your question?
I believe so. What I hear is that it was the intent of the Ad Hoc Committee to have this be a requirement prior to attempting to invoke this defense against eviction in court. So that's, that was the clarification I was seeking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
Before we move on, Mr. Haney's going to need to leave us. So we will, again, I think, need to take as copious notes as we can, and we need to come back for a future study session. We will otherwise be able to move to the council. So, Mr. Haney, thank you for joining us on an otherwise off night for Esq. And appreciate all your work on the ordinance.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a question now from Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I, my timing is horrible because it really is a Jim Haney question. So, Administrator Bobkowitz, for you to take copious notes on, do we have the ability to actually prohibit the assignment of late fees? I, I understand that we can have a defense against eviction, but I don't know that we, late fees seems like part of the Landlord-Tenant Act, and I don't know that we have the ability to do that. So if you could have Jim clarify that for us, I would really appreciate it.
Councilmember Ray, certainly, I'll ask Ms. Negriola if she's aware of other jurisdictions. I believe there are some other jurisdictions doing this, negating the late fees. Is that correct, Monica?
So if we are talking about late fees and prohibition of late fees, I believe that even the mayor's proclamation right now prohibits the late fees. Whether or not that can stand in court, I don't know.
And Deputy Council President will, will be happy to have the city attorney opine on that point at the next discussion of this item.
Yeah, and, and part of it, and Monica's is spot on, and this ordinance is for when the proclamations end, and so I just want to make sure that we, we understand what we can and can't do. So I, I was hoping this would be an easier one than Councilmember Martz's questions.
Thank you. Next, we have a question from Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Council President. This is Zach Hall. Yeah, I've got just three questions and a comment. The first question was for City Attorney Haney, so if we could just take note of it. The process by which a tenant would submit a declaration or a certification to the Superior Court, I kind of want to get some more details on that. What exactly is involved in that? Is it appearing before a judge, or is it submitting a form at a clerk's office? So there's that. Also, so eating, so this ordinance includes a required payment plan if the eviction resolution program is not established, or if the landlord and tenant are not eligible to participate. So is it, so what happens if only one party is eligible to participate in the eviction resolution program? Or is that even a circumstance that's possible? That's another question I have. I don't know if that's a Wally one or a Jim one.
I, I believe if, if, you know, a tenant is either in or they're out, we'll take the questions specifically for the city attorney.
Actually, Jim Haney answered that question. So actually, that's, that finishes up my questions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, clarification?
Thank you. Stacy here. This goes back to the question that Councilmember Martz had, and I'm wondering if there is confusion, given that the section that he's talking about, eviction resolution program, has the mention of shall be required to do so prior to. We talked about two different things during our last meeting. One was the suggestion that we could have a mediation requirement to help tenants, landlords, to help avoid them having to go to court and having something on their record if they could resolve it with some sort of mediation help. But the other thing that came up at the last meeting was the eviction resolution program that the Supreme Court is working on. And that's the program that is mentioned in Section Three, that my understanding was that Councilmember Martz was referring to, and maybe the mention of the word "required to do so" was a little bit confusing. If there is a program, which we don't know the details of yet, and I agree that right now it's very confusing, it's a very long, confusing process, but if it's required, then it's required. I really highly doubt that the city can have code to get us around any kind of Supreme Court order or some court rules. So that was the clarification that I wanted to make, just to make sure we're all on the same page, that we're talking about two different processes. Separately, the, the question I have is, I'd like to know exactly what problem we're trying to solve here. We have several layers currently. So we have the federal eviction moratorium that was raised earlier, and assuming it's enforceable, assuming it's legally enforceable, my understanding from reading it is that it is, it applies to all jurisdictions around the country who don't have eviction moratoriums that are at least as strict as the one that was enacted at the federal level. And my understanding is that Washington's is stricter, so it would not apply here. But if the governor's moratorium sunsets on October 15th, then the federal eviction moratorium would be a backstop. So that would apply here until the end of December. And so if we have all of this coverage until, at the very least, at the end of the year, I would be shocked, and I would bet my last dollar that this is going to be extended by Governor Inslee. And if you actually read his proclamation, he's got some very interesting language in there that provides some sort of a roadmap on what possibly could be implemented at the state level, excuse me, at the state level, to require reasonable repayment plans to be presented by a landlord before they could institute any eviction proceedings. So given all that, I'm trying to figure out what, what problem we're trying to solve now, when it looks like we have coverage and a changed, a changing, evolving landscape and rules and laws covered until the end of the year.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. So I will ask a question, and maybe this is a legal question, but the federal moratorium was mentioned several times in Councilmember Goodman's comments. I don't, I'm not familiar with who that covers, and so I wondered if we could get a brief overview of who that would cover between now and December 31st.
Yes, Council President. I know Ms. Negriola was doing some initial, additional research on that. There's quite honestly not a lot known of the details of the Center for Disease Control's moratorium. Ms. Negriola, do you have any additional information to share with the council?
Thank you so much, City Administrator Bobkowitz. I do have a little bit of more information from reading about it. It seems like it does not cover leases that expire during this time. Also, it does not cover the 20-day no-cause notices that tenants or landlords can give to tenants. However, yes, if the moratorium is lifted by the state, at least it provides that extended time to at least some of the population. I think another concern with the federal moratorium is that it's not necessarily automatic, so people or tenants need to submit their requests and sign a form, basically requesting the right, if I'm explaining it correctly. Again, I apologize, I'm not an attorney. This is just information that I've been reading about, so.
Okay, thank you. We have a comment from Councilmember Martz.
Thank you. Ms. Negriola brought up some great points about the federal moratorium. I think there's lots of news out there that the federal moratorium may not be particularly effective. I think we've seen the state moratorium be effective, and so I think it abundance of caution, you know, without, without, you know, going into chapter and verse, there's a, there's a lot of information that says the federal program may not be very effective, and Ms. Negriola probably said it a lot better than I could. But this is why I want to see us, or that, that would be that, I think the landscape may have changed, but I'm not confident it's changed enough to, to do away with having this protection for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. I'm not seeing anyone else wanting to comment on this in the chat box. I will add, in response to Councilmember Goodman's question about what problem we're trying to solve, in my opinion, I, I have been compelled by the amount of people that are behind on rent and the fact that across the city, so many people are struggling economically, and so, you know, to be, to take measures, preventive, preventive measures that would prevent people from being evicted during a pandemic in which it will likely not be safe for people to double up in other homes in crowded conditions, et cetera, and people may not have safe options. So that's the core reason, is to prevent evictions during a pandemic. When people are struggling, we know many people in our city are behind on rent, and also it's potentially unsafe for people to become crowded and conditions resulting from many people being evicted. I have a comment from Councilmember De Michele.
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michele, and I'll, I'll just echo Council President Hunt's comments. I did want to clarify why I asked the question about the sunset date and what the impact of that would be, because I was really trying to wrap my head around what is the practical impact of this on a person who becomes unemployed because of COVID-19 and continues to be unemployed after the sunset date. And so I just wanted to be sure that we're all clear about the, the impact. I would like us to consider, when it comes back before us, extending or giving people a 30-day grace period following the sunset date, because some people are still going, I, I don't think jobs are going to come back when that sunset date goes into effect. I think that there's going to be a long-term economic impact, and many people will continue to be unemployed even after we've reached Stage Four. So that would be my consideration on that, and I'd love to hear what other people have to say about it, but that would be my thinking, is that we need to provide a little bit more of a grace period after that sunset. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a comment from Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Council President. This is Zach Hall. That's so interesting to hear you say that. I was actually about to ask that we consider the opposite. So I, you know, what we have in here says that any payment plan shall not require payments to begin until 60 days after the sunset date of the ordinance, which is Phase Four in King County. And there will certainly be scenarios by which people are in desperate need still and need that time, but I thought it might be useful for us to have a policy discussion about, well, folks that might not necessarily be in that situation anymore, should they fall under the same 60-day waiting period after the sunset date, or should payment plans be able to start right away? And I just thought this was a conversation we could have, because throughout this whole process, we've really strived to be balanced, and I think potentially adding a little bit more flexibility into, into someone's actual financial situation might be a benefit to, for the sake of balance. But, so I'd be interested in my councilmember's thoughts on that, too, and, and what Councilmember De Michele said.
Thank you. Comment from Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I have kind of three thoughts on, on this ordinance. The first one, which I think Councilmember Goodman talked to, I don't know that this is necessary. I think that, given, I'm less concerned about the CDC's moratorium, but given the state's moratorium and also the Supreme Court's position and direction to the courts, I don't think this is going to be a problem. And so I, I think we are creating a lot of confusion not bringing clarity to this. Second, I think it's going to ultimately be an ineffective ordinance in that, to actually use this and to use a defense against eviction, you have to get to the, to the end of the road. You actually have to go to court, and you have to say, I have this defense against eviction. And people who, this is a generalization, but I don't want to put people who are most likely to be in this position in a, in another bind, which is, I have to take time away to go to court to fight this eviction. And then finally, we don't know what the unintended consequences of this are. This is, this is us going out on a limb largely by ourselves, and I am concerned that we can And I am concerned that we can be setting ourselves up for unintended consequences that I obviously don't have visibility to. And I don't know that the risk is worth what we will actually end up accomplishing with this ordinance.
Thank you. I indicated that I wanted to make a comment. As Council President Hunt, I wanted to comment on the question that was posed by Councilmember De Michele about the timing. I think because I am thinking of this as a public health issue, I am comfortable with it ending after, you know, stage four kicks in. I think that it's true that the economic effects are going to last much longer, absolutely. But at the same time, I believe this is important for public health at this point. And preventative measures against homeless are very important for public health right now. So that's why, part of why I would be comfortable and am comfortable with it ending at stage four and not giving additional time. And then I think, Councilmember Hall, could you restate your question that you posed, please?
Sure thing. Thank you, Council President, this is Zach Hall. My, I just kind of have a policy conundrum going on in my head. And that is, there's this 60-day waiting period after we hit phase four, which is our sunset date for the ordinance, by which tenants and landlords in particular have to wait before they can start charging for their payment plans. My, the policy concern that I'm thinking about is not everybody after, 60 days after phase four is going to be in the same, at the same level of hardship. So I'm thinking that might be something we might want to consider taking into account if we're trying to be balanced. So I was just interested in what council thought of that. Does that make any more sense, or should I keep talking a little bit and see what comes out?
I think it made sense to me, as Council President Hunt. So, and I think, again, I think that we can't expect to understand all of the economic consequences, but I think we have to have some time period there. And it seems reasonable, it seems complicated to take into account people's individual circumstance. And I think, I think the timeline is reasonable, personally. Anybody else have any additional comments? Okay. Well, there is no action on this, this is a study session. We have looked at this several times. We also have another part to this, which is mediation. I'm wondering if council would, if council's pleasure would be to move right now into mediation, or if you would like to provide feedback specifically. And we have received some feedback already from several councilmembers, but if there's a desire to sum up that feedback now for the administration versus to move into mediation. If I don't hear anything, I think I'll move into mediation. Okay. I'm not seeing anything in the chat box. So at this point, I believe the second part of the presentation will be around the mediation option. So if Ms. Negriela could please present on that. Thank you.
Thank you, this is Monica Negriela again, and I apologize for my earlier technical difficulties. I'm hoping I'm not going to have any more. So moving on to mediation services. When I first started researching services, my assumption was that mediation services would be provided as a resource for our residents and not necessarily as a mandated service. However, we do have options, one way or the other. Just wanted to clarify that I walked into this with one assumption. And so we were going to propose that we could explore possible partnerships with a few entities in the area. The closest one in proximity, but also the one that we heard great feedback about in the community is the Bellevue Conflict Resolution Center. And then we also got in touch and learned more about the dispute resolution center of King County. And also, we looked into possible other options such as contracting with another nonprofit entity or private law office as options for mediation services. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about these three options, and then I'm going to be available for questions. So the Bellevue Resolution Center provides a comprehensive list of services, from conflict coaching and conciliation to actual mediation services. I have to admit, I learned quite a bit about all these different types of services in the last week or so. This is a city-funded program, so it's a government entity providing free services for Bellevue residents. When I first talked to them about 10 days ago, they were interested in exploring a possible partnership with us, and they also expressed that they had capacity for expansion. Currently, they have two FTEs on staff and about 37 volunteers, although actively involved in cases right now. They have 14. Since my first contact with them, they've been also approached for the ERP program that we've been talking about. So they may or may not take some of those cases on. And however, this time, they're still very interested in possibly collaborating with us if we are interested in providing mediation services. As Councilmember Mart noted earlier tonight, they do work on a voluntary basis. And in addition to just landlord-tenant issues, they also offer other services for neighbors and elders and families and teens and foreclosures and all sorts of mediation-related services, or I should say, conflict resolution services. Next is the DRC or Dispute Resolution Center of King County. They also provide a comprehensive list of services. However, they also provide the small claim court mediation services, which is a service connected directly with the courts. The difference with the small claims court service is that typically those cases are received after an eviction is filed with the court. However, the DRC of King County is the implementor of the eviction resolution program that has been now created with CARES Act funds. And this is a pilot project, and funds expire at the end of the year in December. And would provide free mediation services, and it is a mandated program. Free mediation services, though, would be provided only to those who are at or below 50% AMI. And then for the other residents, services would be provided on a sliding fee scale. So they are also, so the DRC of King County, they're also open to looking into collaborating with us if we are interested in looking further into providing services. At this point, however, there are services that our residents can access for free. So regardless of the pilot ERP program, the King County Dispute Resolution Center provides services that are free for King County seniors, veterans, and vulnerable populations. And so this is a program that we can just start promoting for our residents if we want to. And then as a third option, we contacted a few other nonprofits and private attorneys. I also had a great conversation with the University of Washington Mediation Clinic. They use private attorneys as well as students at U-Dub to provide services. And so if our city is interested in looking further into collaborating with them, we can certainly look into that option. Other than that, from current entities that I talked to, hourly rates for mediation services range anywhere between $200 and $600 per hour. In talking with someone, I got a $310 per hour case and an estimated five hours per case. And then I also heard from $250 per hour rate. So again, depending, there are quite a few options that we can look into. We can look into payment options based on cases, hourly rates, or we can also just look at a more holistic programmatic model for services. In your report, you have a list of the entities that I contacted to inquire questions. And then, again, if we are to look into providing mediation services, I tried to estimate, and you have it in your report, kind of like an initial caseload that we might have. I made the assumption, starting from the total number of households that we have in Issaquah, and then the estimated rent or occupied households. And then I made the assumption that, let's say, if we have about 15% of the households currently behind in rent and 10% would participate in mediation services, again, assuming that this would not be mandated, then we would have an initial caseload of about 121 or between 90 and 120 caseloads. And that helped me make an initial estimation for a cost that would range anywhere between $80,000 and nearly up to $200,000 or 180, I was estimating. So those are just the initial estimations. Again, if council would like to provide us direction, and if there's an interest to provide this as a resource for our residents, definitely our recommendation would be to further explore partnership and collaboration with the Bellevue Conflict Resolution Center. And then also learn more and wait for additional information on the eviction resolution program and start marketing that and promoting it to our residents. As of this afternoon, the eviction resolution program, I was told that, although initially they were hoping to implement it as of today, they are still in contracting phase, and they plan on launching the program on October 1st. But again, a lot of information just changes, and I feel like every time I'm providing that information, next day, it's outdated already. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. We do have some questions. We have a question from Councilmember De Michele.
Oh, I, you know, I'm sorry, this is Councilmember De Michele. I wanted to go back to a comment that Deputy Counsel President Ray made because I also had the same misconception. He was talking about taking time out of a person's day to go to mediation services and so forth. And all of the services that Ms. Negriela talked about are online now. They're offering mediation services online. And so the amount of time that a person is required to spend is greatly reduced. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, that we're not, we wouldn't be asking people to spend their day, a whole day, going to Seattle or to Bellevue to have these services rendered.
Thank you. Okay, question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. Considering part of this, if we were looking at funding, sorry, that's a cat. If we were looking at funding for providing mediation services to people in the city, are we talking about this as something we wanted to do now? Or is it more of a presentation of information that we would potentially include in budget season?
Is that a question for Ms. Negriela?
I mean, I think it's mostly a question for City Administrator Bob Kowits, or maybe because it's, this is coming from council, is the sense of what is the council's will? Because I'm trying to understand how to comment on this. If this is putting stuff out as a potential for budget season, fine, we can have the conversation then. If we're really, truly talking about spending money now, then there's a different set of comments there.
City Administrator Bob Kowits, do you have a comment on this question?
Certainly. Thank you, Council President, Councilmember Walsh. We're looking for council direction. I think our sense is that this is something that would happen prior to the budget cycle, would happen prior to January 1. So we're looking for direction, and we would come back at a council meeting with a proposed funding source. As you know, we are getting about $590,000 additional CARES Act money from the State of Washington. Mayor Polly plans to come to the City Council next week with a proposal on how that money would be allocated. So certainly, the comments this evening will help inform that discussion of if that money would be available, at least through the end of the year. Our understanding at this point is that that CARE money would be available through December 31 at this point. If that's something that's going to go beyond that, then that becomes a budget discussion as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Question from Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt, this is Chris Ray. First, a comment, and I was well aware that mediation can be done online. Unfortunately, the amount of online court appearances are present, but very limited. And so what we are contemplating here is a defense to eviction that would require someone to go to court. So yes, Councilmember De Michele, mediation can be done online. That's a step in the right direction. But what we've contemplated here is actually making people go to court. And that's not an online service, to the best of my knowledge. So that's just my comment. But my question for Monica is, when we talked about this in our last session, one of the comments was, what's the cost of mediation? But the corollary topic was, what's the cost of going to court and how do they compare? So do you have any data on that, or can we get something about? Because I think mediation is a really good idea. I mean, it's a really good idea. And I think it's a cost-effective idea. But I'd like to have some data that says, you know, mediation could cost us $180,000 if we funded all the mediation. But what would it cost our residents if they were to have to go to court to use their defense against eviction?
Thank you, Council Deputy Ray, and this is Monica Negriela. I do not have information on the costs for going to courts right now. I would be very happy to bring that back when, at the next time when we bring this item back to council.
Great, thank you, Monica. And also, thank you for all of the work that you've done. This is very, very comprehensive and very helpful, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, you're very welcome, my pleasure.
Okay, question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. I actually have a comment and opinion, so I don't know if you want to continue on with questions before we provide our feedback?
Thank you, I think, I think yes, let's get all the questions out of the way, and then we will proceed with feedback. So we have a question from Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Council President, this is Zach Hall. I just have a question for our city administrator. I'm kind of chewing on what the Deputy Counsel President just said. But if, if your landlord is evicting you, you would still have to go before court, right? So the fact that we have a defense to eviction doesn't add an additional step. Is that correct, or am I thinking about that correctly?
Councilmember Hall, members of the council, again, I'm not an attorney either. I think, you know, in listening to the council's discussion on this matter over the last several times, I think there's been a desire to try to avoid court at all costs, and to see what can the city do either by ordinance or by initiative to insert itself to be helpful to those individuals who have received, who find themselves in a position where they may be evicted. People who have not paid rent, who have been able to keep their home under a moratorium for eviction. It's sort of the what's next. And so I think that part of this is, what is the council's desire to, at what point do you insert yourself in the process? Because from what little I understand of these processes, there are usually multiple discussions between the landlord and the tenant prior to going to court. And so if there are actions that this council wishes to take either by ordinance or again, by programs such as funding mediation, we would be able to insert ourselves prior to going to court. So I hope that answers your question. Again, I think part of it will depend Again, I think part of it will depend on what the ordinance ultimately says for the council. A lot of that is geared toward court. But again, through these discussions, there's also been many voices who have said, what can the city do prior to that court process? And I think mediation, that would be available really at any point that either a landlord or a tenant wanted our assistance to try to come to some solution. So at the end, by the end of the day, we want to keep people housed. So what can we do to help facilitate that process?
Thank you. That was very helpful for me, so I appreciate that. And do we have any other? I'll go back to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. My thought on this is that mediation is a fantastic addition to people's toolboxes. And I love the thought process behind this of us trying to keep people from having evictions on their records and all of that. When it comes to paying for it, if we're talking about having it come from CARES funding, I'd have to look at the legality of that, you know? I think that money has to be spent by December 31st, so I don't know if that can be spent for a contract going into next year. So that would be my concern. And then if we're looking at basically talking about a contract for next year, I'm all for having that conversation, but I don't want to have that conversation outside of budget season coming up in 14 days. That's a significant amount of money. It could pay for an employee. It could mean other things that we would potentially be taking out of general fund. So I welcome the conversation, but within the right context.
Does any other council member wish to make a comment or have a question any further on this topic? Okay, I will make one quick comment, which is that I think Councilmember Goodman and Ray in their memo made a case that this would be a cost-effective, mediation would be cost-effective. I think that because the need will be higher than usual, I would expect, especially because some programs are requiring mediation, as I understand it, I think that there will be a lot of need for this sort of program shortly. And so I am interested in the city pursuing this. And I think, I think the questions that Councilmember Walsh raised about what funding we could use for it are valid, but I would say I am supportive of having a program like this, because I think there will be a real need, and it is a tool in the toolbox, as I believe Councilmember Walsh also said. I have a comment from Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Council President. This is Councilmember Martz. Yeah, I think that, I'm very appreciative that Councilmembers Ray and Goodman brought forward mediation as a facet of the solution that we can offer to the community. I'll say what I said last time, which is that there were a number of council members who were willing to consider direct assistance to the community. And money that we're talking about here is a rounding error compared to what that kind of money might have involved. I would be in favor of not waiting for budget finalization for 2021, but moving forward, I mean, it's conditional on the state moratorium going away. If the state moratorium doesn't go away, we don't have to spend it in 2020. But if the state moratorium does go away, I don't want to wait till 2021, merely because December 31st is in this year and January 1st is in next year. So I would like to see it be part of our solution going forward. And I appreciate the administration reviewing potential partners and coming up with the partner that they've got, which is BRCRC. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember D. Michelle.
Thank you. This is Councilmember D. Michelle. When we were doing our research and talking to various people about this ordinance, the question was that I was asking, who are we going to help with this? And of course, we want to help the tenants, obviously. But what I heard back as well was, this ordinance is really aimed at helping the quote-unquote "mom and pop" landlords. The larger landlords, the large corporations that have large apartment complexes, they hire professional managers who are adept at negotiations and mediation. It's the smaller landlords, the people who are counting on that income for their retirement, the people that own maybe one or two houses or a small apartment complex who need this assistance. And they are also the people who are going to be hardest hit by their tenants being unable to pay their rent. And so I see this really helping people who are at the heart of our community, who are really hurting right now, and who will be hurting far into the future. And if we can help them by providing mediation, and I do thank Councilmembers Goodman and Ray for bringing that forward, if we can help them by providing those services that they don't have because they're too small or inexperienced to have them, I think that we would be helping a significant part of our community to weather this most unprecedented event. I am, I would support moving this forward to the council for action. And I would also support moving forward with supporting it financially as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I am not seeing any more comments or questions on this item. We'll give one more minute in case there's any further comments. And City Administrator Bob Quitz, I'm wondering if you have what you need to move forward on this, or if you would like us to explain further.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. Unfortunately, I don't have what I need. I'm, let's start, I guess, with the ordinance. So there have been some additional questions for the city attorney, there are some clarifying points. I've also heard a number of council members who think perhaps this is not the time to move forward with the ordinance. So I would like to get direction. Is there the expectation that we're moving forward? If so, are we coming back to a future study session to discuss this? Are we ready to go and put this on an agenda for a city council meeting? So that, I guess, is the first question.
Okay, thank you. This is, this is where it's hard to not have the direction that we would give for or against to have it be open-ended. Does any council member wish to weigh in on this? Or I will, I can start, but maybe yes, we do. Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I don't have a comment, as I have a thought. I think it goes back to something that Councilmember Martz talked about last time we met, which is, do we want to have A or B, or A and B? So A being an ordinance that says, here's your defense to eviction, B being, here is a requirement to do mediation, and if you do it, you have a defense to eviction, and C is all of the above. So I think what I have heard from this group is there is a, there seems to be, I shouldn't say that, to me, I'll just speak for myself. For me, there's a lot of merit in mediation, and I think that having an ordinance that mandates mediation will get us to where we need to go. I don't like the idea of creating the defense to eviction part of the ordinance, because I don't think it'll help, and I think it has all sorts of downsides. So those are just my thoughts on kind of how I would move this forward.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I just want to clarify, so you would, so you would propose a different ordinance then that would mandate mediation, that part, but would not then have the next part, which would be the defense against eviction? So you would mandate...
The mediation would be the defense against eviction. If you don't, if you do the mediation, and you're the landlord, you have, or you're the tenant, you have, and landlord won't mediate, you have a defense. If you both mediate, you should come to a resolution that makes, that makes sense. But an arbitrary defense against eviction, I've never been a big fan of. It's just never, never sat well with me. So that's, that's, that's just what I would like.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else? All right. I will give a comment, which is that I think, like with everything with COVID-19, we don't know, there are so many new rules and regulations that would affect this and so many other things. It's very hard to know, and it does seem like it's changing all the time. That said, I think mediation is, is a good thing to have in place. I think we are likely to have people that are needing that service to start working out payment plans with their, start needing to work out payment plans with, between tenants and landlords. There's going to be required, the state, the program that will kick into effect on October 1st, people will start needing support for that. If they can't pay their rent, I imagine they will also have difficulty paying for this service. So I am supportive of that, and I would like to see that move forward. I would like to see that up for council consideration in October. That would be my, my take on that. And then I think that the ADHOC Committee has, has worked with Rental Housing Association. We've worked with a number of their groups to get feedback, affordable housing groups as well as landlord groups, as well as tenant groups. So this, you know, we don't know if the, we haven't known this entire time if the governor's eviction moratorium will be extended. And that does obviously affect when people would use this, but the way the current version is written, it will kick into effect when that ends. And so I would be supportive of bringing it forward as well, but for council consideration. We have a comment from Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Just to be clear, I support option C, A plus B, Belt Plus suspenders, both the mediation and the defense against eviction. Thank you.
Okay. Is anybody else wishing to speak? Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Council President. This is Chris Ray. I'm wondering if the direction to go then is to draft two ordinances, one ordinance that speaks to A and one that speaks to B, and then we can vote on them individually.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on, give direction? Okay, thank you. I agree, Council Deputy President Ray, I agree, there's different opinions on this. And so I think, you know, the way forward that could reflect, for instance, a alternative motion that somebody could make, that would be very helpful. And Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Boy, I hope to see an ordinance that combines the two. I mean, I guess that's what we have in front of us today. So those who would like the A plus B are able to support the current ordinance, which I thought we had a majority of council supporting last time we talked. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Administrator Bob Quitz, do you have what you need at this point?
Huh, you're not seeing...
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember D. Michelle.
Oh, sorry. And I'm sorry that I wasn't muted. Yeah, I would, I would like the ordinance that we were looking at tonight to be brought forward, and then if there are amendments, or, you know, we can, we can work with, with that ordinance when it comes before the council for action. And there might be more than one amendment to it, but I think we should work with what we've got in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Council President. And apologies, City Administrator, I know we're running very long. I'm trying to think about how to say this, but I do think that we should, if we're going to have two ordinance come before us next, I think the one that we have now with A plus B is clearly something that we're hearing, please bring forward. But I also think there's value in bringing one forward that's just mediation, like the Deputy Counsel President brought up. Because one thing we haven't really talked about a lot today is the timing aspect, and what happens if the governor's is extended? What happens if we figure out that the federal moratorium actually is effective? And we're confident in its ability to hold up? We might want to just move forward with a pilot mediation program, and once, and then kick it down, kick the ordinance down to another study session. So I just think by bringing forward those two options, we give ourselves options in the future. So is that helpful direction, City Administrator?
Okay, thank you. City Administrator, I think that that is probably as clear as we can be on this, so it's, do you have what you need for our next step?
So it sounds as if Council President members of the council were going to work on two ordinances and bring them back for a study session. That study session would likely be the week of October 12th. Deputy Clerk, if you could just help me confirm the dates there?
Thank you, City Administrator. While that's happening, I just want to clarify the intent. Is the intent to bring it back to a study session, or is the intent to bring this forward for a vote? Okay, I, I'm seeing some votes indications. I think that we would prefer, if we could just bring this forward for a vote, because we have spent a fair amount of time discussing this at this point. And, yes.
So, so Council President, I think then we would come back to you on October the 5th, your regular meeting with the, with, it sounds like, two ordinances, as well as if there's an agreement with the City of Bellevue to move forward mediation. We would have all that on for October 5.
I believe that is, is the case, yes.
All right. And that's clear direction.
Okay, thank you. We have a comment from Councilmember, Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I actually don't think that's right. I think, I heard a majority of the people who spoke said, bring me back the ordinance that's currently being contemplated, and if we want to change it, we will, we will amend it during session. And it's not my choice, but to be really honest, that's what I heard the majority of people say.
Well, thank you, Council Deputy President Ray. I actually think, I mean, this is a study session, so we can, we can give direction that would be if you, if there's an interest in having an alternative, it sounds like that's a possibility. So I don't think we, I think that, I think that would be fine, it gives that possibility.
Madam Council President, I think, I believe, under your practice, a sort of a straw vote is acceptable. Is that not correct? To just, to just provide direction?
Well, we, we know, and, and, yes, no, we do not take straw votes. We just try to provide general direction, which is the sense of the body. And so, I mean, the sense, sense of the body on this one is complex, because we are not, we have some differing direction, which happens from time to time. But I'm hearing those two, I'm hearing, as, as the chair, I'm hearing that there are council members that would like to consider two options when it comes forward for the vote.
All right, so we will have two. And we'll also then have whatever we have from the City of Bellevue.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment, or are we going to move on to the next item? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. So we will move now on to the next item, ID 0752, Providence High School's informational update. And I, I also want to thank everybody who has stayed on the call for all this time. Really appreciate it, and thank you for sticking with us through that last agenda item. And with that, I will hand it over for a presentation from Community Planning and Development Director Keith Niven.
Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me okay? Great. So... Great. So first off, I don't want to disappoint you, but I don't really have a presentation. I feel like the person who came to the party without the gift, so sorry for that. But I do want to set up the framework for this evening. Really, where we are is we have not received an application yet from the school district for the high school and elementary school in the Providence Heights site. And so what this is this evening is really an opportunity for some early questions and answers that the council may have. There are the project manager for the school district is is part of this meeting, as is their architect and civil engineer Lucy Sloman. The city's land development manager is also part of this meeting. What we provided you for this meeting is really a very high level summary of the very extensive public comments we received as part of the community conference that was held by the Development Commission. You know, it really revolves around many of the issues that you heard during the proposed rezone of the property and the comp plan redesignation, its traffic and its stormwater and its trees and its buffer to Providence Point. And so with that, I really, I think the group that's here participating in this meeting really are looking just to answer any questions you might have at this point in the process. And it's like my boss has something to say, so.
City Administrator Bob Quitz?
Yes, thank you, Council President. If I could ask Mr. Niven perhaps to just briefly walk through the information that's in the packet, and then also speak to the next steps timeline. I know that there's concern regarding the council's role in a quasi judicial form, how that will impact communications and things. So if first maybe you could just review what's in the packet, see if there's any specific questions to that, as well as to just make sure everyone is clear about what the next steps are. There's been lots of community discussion about how the community can have further input into this and what exactly the council's role will be as as the project moves forward.
Thank you for that cue. I would absolutely love to do that. So what's in the packet this evening is basically the informational memo that identifies the project, which you're aware of, as well as kind of the community conference that was held on July 15. You know, the city, you know, what we identify is the city received approximately 45 comments during the comment period, which was July 3rd through the 22nd. And we've received numerous comments basically since. And we're in the process right now. What happens after the community conference basically is the city summarizes all the comments that were provided and provides a response to those comments. And we give that then to the applicant or the school district in this case, for them to provide their take on those comments as well. So before that document then becomes public and goes to the Development Commission for their consideration, both the city and the applicant take their time to to work through the public comments and provide initial responses. When the application ultimately comes in, you know, there is, you know, the first part of this is is staff will then review the application against the city code. And, you know, just to address one of Mr. Osmer's questions earlier, is if there is a request for administrative adjustment of standards, that was actually covered in the memo under opportunities for public comment, item C. But to unpack that a little bit more, what the city code says is is that under a Level Two application, we are required to provide notice to parties of record as well as adjacent property owners. So if there ultimately is a request for an adjustment of standards, staff will treat that as separate decisions and separate public notices will go out for those if indeed they are submitted by the school district. But again, going back to the point is, we have not received any applications to date, which is why we can have a fairly un hampered conversation this evening. At some point, the Development Commission will make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council is the ultimate decision maker on the land use permits for the high school and the elementary school under the master site plan and site development permit, which have been combined at the request of the school district. So there will be a quasi judicial limitations on your comments with the community once an application is submitted. But until that happens, you guys can talk about this at your hearts' intent. So that's generally what's in the memo, is identifying both what the next steps are as well as opportunities for public comment. Besides our process, there is a separate SEPA or State Environmental Policy Act process that has to be undertaken. That is going to be the school district is going to serve as their own lead agency on that decision. And then whatever noticing requirements they would have would be part of their process. So that's that's my summary.
So we do have some questions. City Administrator Bob Quitz, did you want to make a comment?
Only Council President, just to make sure that that overview was was sufficient in your mind to to get us started. I think there are several comments now from the council, so we'll be happy to answer any questions through that course.
Okay, thank you. We I I believe the first question is from Councilmember March.
Thank you. I think it's Councilmember Hall, actually.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Council President. This is Zach Hall. Yes, technically I was first, but Keith is a first class government employee and was listening to the community comments, and I just wanted to make sure Mr. Osmer's question was answered. So thank you very much, Keith.
You're welcome, Council.
Councilmember March?
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I actually have two questions, and they're different enough that I'm going to ask each of them separately. So the first question has to do with the information we have in the packet on public comment summary, and I'm looking at page 24 of the packet. And my question is, these are written as if they are summaries, but I'm wondering if they're summaries or individual items. For instance, I see a line that says that residents object to the potential stadium. I'm suspicious that there would be unanimity on that particular issue based on comments that we've heard in the past from the community. So I'm asking, are these are these do these represent individual data points, or are they really an attempt to parse the net feedback that the Development Commission received during the community conference? That's the first of my two questions.
So so let me try and answer that. I, you know, so what I would say this is, is it represents multiple comments from the community, but not necessarily the position of it. We weren't trying to provide the position of the community. So so what that specific item represents is the city has received numerous comments from primarily Providence Point residents about their concern about noise, traffic, and lights related to the stadium. So there are, you know, this this one, well, two page summary is boiled down from all of the, right now, the community conference memo that we're working on with the school district, I think is about 200 pages, which includes every single comment that we've received. So that document itself will be delivered to the Development Commission and will be part of the council packet at some point.
Okay, I just seem to recall that the community had a variety of opinions about a potential stadium. There was the the community did not speak with one voice on this issue.
Absolutely not. There's there are definitely multiple voices on all of these issues that we have heard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. The second question that I have is really around buffer. And my question is, you know, I'm a maps guy, as you know. I love maps. There's no new maps here. Is has there been any substantive conversation? I mean, I know the school district and the homeowners association in Providence Heights did not come to an agreement as to what a proposal should look like. Has there been progress or developments on the subject of buffer that we could understand? Because that was one of the areas that there was both a lot of community interest in and a lot of concern from council members about.
So this is a this is this particular issue, which is very important to Providence Point, is also tied in with two of the other issues that I think you guys have heard at different points. One is the FAR requirement, and the other is the trees and the tree requirement in the code. You know, we are talking with the school district about their draft plan, the one that I think was shown as part of the rezone, as it relates to both FAR and the required trees, because I think they, you know, they do impact how big the buffer is. And so we're in those conversations. We don't have an application yet, but we are staff and the school district are having conversations about that. And this may be a good opportunity for the school district to weigh in on that particular issue as well. So I'll invite, I don't know, Tom or Todd, want to?
Yeah, this is this is Todd Sawen. I'm a civil engineer with AHBL, working on the project. I guess at the community conference, we talked extensively that we were going to go out and do an arborist report and rewalk the site. That has happened. There's a number of trees along the property line that are within the code required buffers that we were able to save and add to the project. So additional trees along all of those edges. On site, we're retaining about five acres of existing vegetation, which is more than what we were doing at the community conference. So that walk and push from the Development Commission to do that was really helpful and has changed the project.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for being here to answer our questions. Councilmember March, does that address your questions?
I think so. Still would love more maps whenever I get the chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Director Niven, you referenced the summary of all the comments in the in the informational memo that we have. And as I recall, there were a fairly significant number of comments, questions, expectations that the council members had when we last had this topic before us and took a vote. So I wondered what happens to those questions and comments and expectations? Where are those? Do those go to the Development Commission? They're not in here.
Right, so this is this is not a staff report or, you know, intended to represent all the comments. It was it was really more to provide the council with a flavor of those comments that we were receiving. Those comments that were and those expectations, I think that were shared by the city council during the rezone and comp plan redesignation process, we have taken note of those, and those will be part of staff's evaluation and conversations with the school district as as this project moves forward through permitting.
So my specific question is, do those comments, questions, and expectations go to the Development Commission? So they, because I would think that those would be part of the comments that the Development Commission would hear. And if not, then they wouldn't be part of the record, because it's going to be a closed record when it comes back to us.
Yes, the open record is at the Development Commission.
So again, my question is, is the Development Commission going to have the comments, questions, and expectations that the council provided at that meeting so that it becomes part of the record before the Development Commission? Because what I heard you say is as a it's part of a conversation that staff is having with the school district, which doesn't necessarily make it part of the record.
Sure. What I'm hearing from the council member is a desire for those comments to be part of the record, which we can provide as an attachment to the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Does any other council member have a question at this time? I do have one. Okay, so my question is regarding the concerns that are in the in the materials that were provided to us with our packet around the Laughing Jacobs Creek, Lake Sumamish, the Kokoni populations, and other fish wildlife habitat. So specifically what I wonder if you could speak to, if the representative from the school district could speak to how those environmental concerns are being raised. And also, I wanted to mention, acknowledge that the we have been acknowledging emails that have been coming to council on different topics, and I wanted to acknowledge that we have received and we have been able to read the email that was referenced by one of the call in speakers from the City of Sumamish to the Izua School District on which the City of Izua was CC'd. So again, my question is regarding stormwater and the considerations around the environmental issues that are around the Kokoni habitat around the property.
Yeah, this is Todd Sawen again. So we we've made significant strides in the stormwater system. We're proposing we, the site is proposing to meet enhanced water quality and phosphorus removal from the site, which are both the goals of this basin for Laughing Jacobs and Lake Sumamish. We've met with the Kokoni group to walk through those goals and make sure that, you know, we're meeting kind of what what they see for the basin. That's an ongoing discussion that's not done. I can tell you after the first meeting with them, they they were presently surprised by what we were proposing. The other piece we're doing from a flow control standpoint is we're detaining stormwater. We don't have a way to infiltrate it. We just, the site doesn't have infiltratable soils. But we're detaining and releasing at the forested rate, so we will actually be reducing the runoff from the site. We're also working with the City of Izua's staff to come up with a downstream conveyance path that is better for our neighbors in Providence Point, because right now, a lot of our site would drain directly through them. Providing an overflow path along 228th to make this better for everyone involved is really something we have been working with and are committed to through the project.
Okay, thank you for that information. Does any other council member, this is an informational item, so this is an opportunity for us to have our questions answered. And as as was mentioned, this will become quasi judicial for us. So does any other council member wish to make a comment or question? And I see there's a comment now from Councilmember March.
Thank you, Council President. So I just, I want to give a comment about portables, because before I got involved in municipal public service, I was very involved in school district redistricting and managing for growth as a as a parent and and community, you know, as a PTA member. And, you know, I just, I want to share with the council that there's this reflective attitude that portables are an inherently bad thing. And I just want to point out that that's not at all how they're viewed when people are planning for growth and the long term health of school districts. This district will eventually start shrinking, right? And if you build if you build hard walls for every student that's in the district right now, very soon, you'll have too much capacity in the district. And so as a as someone who did, I don't know, four or five of these redistrictings, it's really the sign of a prudent body that they're trying to be careful and not overbuild. It's true that the district had thought it was going to peak a while ago, and it's in that peak, it's continued to ascend into the distance. But, you know, I just, I want us to be careful as, you know, when I hear people talk about about sort of reflexively that portables aren't inherently that idea, my kid spent time in portables at I V E before I V E did a rebuild, and they're fine. They're, they're upstanding citizens at this point. So I just want to point that as a, as a, as a little bit way, a little bit different way to think about portables. Any district that's being careful with residents' money, and I know our district is, is very careful, is winds up using portables at a, at a certain point in the life cycle of the building that they've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Question from councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is councilmember Walsh. I am very pleased that councilmember Martz's kids had a good experience in portables. My kid did not. Their water was shut off because it had sat in the system too long, and so they were not able to get water in their portables last year. The heat and cooling was not a fantastic situation, and they were separated from bathrooms and had only limited bathroom breaks allowed. Don't mind the catch. So my experience with portables at Grand Ridge Elementary has not been a fantastic experience. I would also encourage the school district, if there is a way to not build portables in a growing environment, as much as councilmember Martz says that's prudent, I understand that, but we are continuing to be a growing community. That being said, I approach this with a question. Samamish has written us a letter saying their stormwater situation requirements are at a higher standard than ours. So I'm wondering what our requirements are for a property that is on the border between two communities, whether we have any requirements there, and what our opportunities are to go beyond maybe what our code requirements are in order to satisfy some of those things. I certainly heard things that the school district is looking to do on the site, but I'm more talking about the requirements and opportunities that we have as a municipal government overseeing these ideas.
Great question, councilmember. I'm going to let Lucy Sloman answer that question.
Lucy Sloman playing engineer for an evening. So I had our senior stormwater engineer give me some background on this. The difference, just to recap, what was brought up in the Samamish letter is that the city of Isaguas uses the state DOE manual and our own addendum, while Samamish uses the King County manual and their addendum. In terms of basic treatment, it's identical. In terms of enhanced treatment, they, the King County manual lacks an exemption that the DOE manual has. As you may have heard, the school district has committed to using the enhanced standard rather than taking the exemption. We think that would be fairly limited even if they did, but we were very pleased to hear that they will meet the enhanced standard. The other piece is phosphorus, which is related to sensitive lake. Most of that is similar, but slight differences in that the DOE manual and the King County manual match, but each city has adopted some differences. The city's addendum assigns where you have to take the phosphorus out of, as opposed to the manuals, which allow a city to make that own determination. However, the city of Samamish has set a higher standard of 80% rather than the manuals, which set it at 50%. I'm not able to evaluate the value of those two differences, but each city has something that's higher than the other. I just don't know the extent to which those impact things.
So I appreciate the details, but what I'm really looking for is process on this. Do we have the ability to choose a higher standard? If, if not, you know, like, is there a requirement to choose a higher standard on something that borders areas? What are those possibilities?
My understanding is that the, and I'm just sticking with your language of requirements. Our standards apply to our property. Samamish's standards apply within their jurisdictional boundaries, and so we would not apply those. However, we are certainly attempting to negotiate to the furthest extent we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh, does that answer your question?
I think I'd like more information from the administration, maybe in an email, over what, what are our options for putting, I don't know, requirements isn't the right word, but for trying to hold to standards, environmental standards? So if I can ask that, as far as an email that gives us a little bit more understanding of how that might go in the future, that would be appreciated.
Okay. City administrator Bob Quitz, I think, or, or, I think that would be possible? Would that be possible? By email?
You know, certainly, other than to say that we have the ability to ask any applicant to meet whatever additional standard we would like them to meet, they have the ability to say no. And so in this instance, the school district has indicated they're prepared to meet that additional standard. Otherwise, we would have to amend either code, or in this instance, Lucy, correct me, it's an adopted plan from the state that we chose. I imagine that is periodically adopted by the city. So those are really the two options. So I think we're hearing from the council and the community the desire to meet that higher standard. Mr. Niven has indicated the school district intends to do that. I think as there are other issues that are raised, part of any review of a project is, as Mr. Niven said, it's a negotiation, it's a discussion, it's a deliberation. There are some things that are law which we can mandate, there are other things that we can request. And in my experience, working with any kind of developer, public or private, they generally want to try to accommodate the requests of the jurisdiction. So we will continue to be aggressive with that, and I think Mr. Niven and his staff know the importance of this project and the environmental impacts, and that we will, you know, request what we can as it makes sense. There will be a point when the district says no, that they're not able to do that for whatever reason. And I think those issues will come before the development commission, they'll ultimately come before the city council, and those bodies will have to, you know, make a determination based on the facts and the laws associated with each of the particular issues. So that's what I would say in an email. If that's sufficient, councilmember Walsh, we'll leave it at that.
That's fantastic. I, I think that's a very clear response, telling us what the options are and what the approach is from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, I missed that there was a offer on clarification on portables, which I missed. So if, if you would like to make clarification on portables, please go ahead.
Thank you. This is Jordan Keel, I'm principal of the study architects, the architect of record on this project. And I just wanted to clarify that there's not the district's intent that the portables are, you know, installed day one or anything like that. The reason they're shown on the site plan and we're looking to get them permitted as part of the land use is that, is actually an O S P I requirement. The Office of Superintendent Public Instruction at the state has, requires now all new school projects identify locations for future portables, understanding that districts, you know, need that future flexibility. And so it's, it's really a requirement. We don't have a choice. I might add, just while I have the mic, that there was actually a good deal of misinformation, including that piece floating around in the Samamish letter and as well in the public comment that, you know, if, if you guys would like, we could spend a little time clarifying.
I, I think we have a clarification on, on portables, although would councilmembers like further information from Mr. Keel? Oh, okay. We do have an indication that we would like that additional information. Please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I might ask for Todd or Tom to jump in here on some of the more technical things, but I think the stormwater was an important one to clarify. I heard that in public comments. The, the portables and this idea that we could solve the challenges that we're having with meeting the FAR requirement through additional square footage of the building is, it's out of scale. It's, I think FAR is going to be the big challenge that we have in meeting the land use code, and we will be seeking an adjustment on that. And there's, there's a lot of math reasons. Councilmember Martz, I would love to show you a map, because it, it is really a tricky one to solve. But in short, we're, you know, charged with spending the taxpayers' money as responsibly as we can and finding the most cost-effective solutions to things like building a parking structure. And so, you know, some of the ideas that we've heard through working with staff, but also with community are things like, why can't all the parking be underneath the playfields? And, you know, the short answer is that it's not safe for students to be in dark cavernous parking garages. It's incredibly expensive to put things like fields on top of parking garages. And, you know, there's, there's also technical things like warranty issues for putting a field on top of, you know, an artificial turf field on top of a parking garage. And frankly, we're not overparked as a site. So I just wanted to bring some of those things up, because those are things that you may hear or read in different memos and that are floating around out there. And I just want to say, sort of at a high level, that we are very confident that we have, we have packed this site as densely as we possibly can in order to meet the needs of the school and, you know, and by extension, the, the community and, you know, needs of the students that will be attending this school. But we've done it in a really dense way, and I think FAR is one tool that the land use code, you know, tries to leverage to create density, and I think that's great. But what it doesn't account for is things like building shape. And, you know, we've done a really good job, I think, of keeping the building as compact as we possibly can. If you look at the footprint of the, of the plan of the, of the high school building that we're proposing, it is way smaller than any of the typical high schools you'd see throughout the district or actually throughout the entire region. And then also, the, you know, the site is about 40 acres. We've devoted about six of that back to buffers. We've got another five of it devoted to an elementary school. And so we're left with something a little under 30 acres for a high school, which I would say, along, you know, with athletic programs, is actually on the light side for a high school in our region. We are, it, it is dense by pretty much any measure. And yet, in spite of all those things, we will be seeking some relief through the, through the mechanisms in the code for an adjustment on FAR. Todd, I wonder if there were a couple other things in the Samamish letter that I thought might, weren't clarifying? I wonder if you want to jump in on any of those?
Yeah, I, I think the, the FAR piece you talked about, there's two things I wanted to add. So we have access on only one side of our site, which obviously hinders our ability to provide access. We also have about 70 feet of elevation gain across our site, and needing to meet ADA requirements is going to make this really challenging. So those are all pieces, I guess, along with what Jordan said about the FAR. The, the Samamish letter, I guess, first, I want to thank you guys for letting us come and talk to you and, and being part of this dialogue, because that's not something we got with the Samamish letter. We just received a letter out of the blue, which is unfortunate, because there's a lot of information that I think has happened. We have had meetings with Samamish before that, and not an opportunity to do that. I think we, we do have a full traffic report. We're proposing improvements to 228th. We're working with Samamish to do that, to make sure that we're not impacting the neighboring traffic. We also have two emergency access points. We have the emergency, the main access we're proposing, but also an emergency access point off to the side, which is, and I'm not sure what site plan they had when they wrote that letter and how much information they had, but we're definitely going, kind of, that, that's an ongoing discussion, and we, we will be addressing all of their comments in that letter. Again, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you guys tonight.
Thank you. Okay. I am wondering if there's any additional questions or comments from council at this time on this item? I am not seeing anything. Oh, councilmember De Michelle has a question.
This is councilmember De Michelle. I have to say that I'm listening to all of this information, and it's very kind of frustrating because as soon as the site plan is filed, we won't be able to discuss. And so I'm wondering if Director Niven could tell us, is there going to be, is there a time in the process, somewhere in the process, where we could get just a factual presentation? Or is that completely off the boards once the site plan is filed? Because I'm hearing things that I didn't know about, have not considered. I think there's so much details when you're building a large campus like this, that there are questions upon questions, and I'm thinking, when do we, when do we get to hear all of that? Or is that in the site plan when it's filed? Or what's the process here?
Thank you, councilmember De Michelle. Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. So let me try. So the way that the process works is staff work with the applicant, ultimately put a staff report together. It gets to, it goes to the development commission. That's where the public hearing occurs. That's the open record public hearing at the development commission, and the development commission will then make a recommendation to the city council. It then comes to the city council where, you know, we would serve as presenting both that recommendation and the staff report and any other documents the council may want to ultimately render the decision on the land use permits. Staff, under a quasi judicial proceeding like this one, there are limitations to the council engaging with the community or any interested parties on this application, but you're, have, you have the ability to interact with staff. Staff are supposed to be neutral in this proceeding, and therefore, we can provide opportunities for informational updates. We can walk you guys, once the site plan's actually submitted, if the council would like another informational update from staff, we can walk you through the site plan, whatever other documents might be submitted with the application. And, and there can be those opportunities of just clarifying and providing the council with background. Again, we can't really give you our opinion or recommendations, but it's really just, you know, presenting the information to you. That, that can happen at, at, say, a study session if the council wanted to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Question from councilmember Goodman?
Director Niven, I just had a clarification, a question, hopefully you can clarify. You said, once it comes back from the, this was in the beginning part of your comments, once it comes back with a recommendation from the development commission to the council, then you can provide any other documents that the council requests? You followed up later by saying if we had an interim presentation, you would be providing the documents that had been submitted. But my understanding is that once it comes to us from the development commission, it's a closed record hearing. We can't request any information unless it was referred to in the information that we get from the development, that it has to be either in the record or referred to in the record. We don't get to request anything new.
True.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
That is true, but it's, it's, it's unusual for us to provide the entire written record to the council for their proceedings. I, you know, we, if, you know, this is, this one's going to be, we don't do these very often. And so what I would say is, the, the record is established at the development commission. The council can access all of the documents that the development commission Development Commission has access to. But generally, you know, we wouldn't provide all of that physical evidence to the council with the agenda bill and this when it comes forward. So there's a little bit of a nuance there. Your point is accurate, council member. The written record is the written record that's established at the Development Commission. And if the council wants access to any of that, staff would provide that for them.
Agreed. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear, because it wasn't clear, was that any documents that we requested, as long as it's referred to in the record, even though you may not have provided a copy, we can still reference it. But if somebody says, hmm, I'm interested in a, I'm just going to throw it out there, some sort of a transportation report that I thought I heard about two years ago, I'd like to see that. No, we can't, unless it's referred to in the record, it is not available to us. So we can't request any more information. Hence, that's why I asked earlier that the council information was provided to the Development Commission. Otherwise, unless it's otherwise part of the record, we can't. It's not part of the record. I just want to make sure everybody's clear that it's really important. The record before the Development Commission is really important, because that's what we have when we make a decision.
That's accurate.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions on this topic. So one last call, if there's any questions or comments from council. Okay, and this is an informational item. So I wanted to make one comment on the FAR. I think that this is, we have attempted to make code that will build schools that are more condensed so that they could fit on smaller sites, and this is a large site. And so, I think the FAR requirement, I, well, I understand the challenge. I think, I think that it's important that as we consider the FAR, we consider the reasons why the FAR, what went into that code and the considerations that went into developing that code in the first place. And that's my comments, my last comment. If anybody else has any more comments on this item or questions? Okay. Okay, I have a request for a quick break. So I think we can take a quick break. And I wanted to say thank you so much for all of the individuals who called in to help us answer our questions on this topic. Really appreciate your time this evening at this late hour, and thank you so much for calling in and for sticking with us. And so now, I'll call a five-minute break so that it's, so it's 9:03 right now. So we'll come back at 9:08. Thanks. Councilmember Ray, I'm wondering if you're there but don't have your video on? Okay. All right, great. I, are we ready to convene? Tim? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so next we have ID 0737, 2021 Budget Deliberation Schedule. And we will go over a quick presentation presented, I believe, by Finance Director Beth Goldberg.
Sorry, was having trouble with my mute button. I actually think City Administrator Bob Kowits was going to tee this up, but I'm happy to tee it up if you would like me to. I see him giving me indications.
Indicating, yes. Okay, I'm sorry. I'll hand it over to City Administrator Bob Kowits, my, my.
I think, I think he's signaling for, I think he's signaling for me to do it.
Go, go ahead, Beth.
So the purpose of the discussion tonight is really something that Council President Hunt requested, which is a discussion among the council members about potential ways to run the budget process in a way that will facilitate policy discussions around the budget. So there's a memo in your packet that includes some of the ideas that Council President Hunt had for facilitating questions. We do have, we're trying to do with this year's budget process, fewer budget deliberation sessions. We've got three scheduled with the potential for two backups if need be. And in order to make the best use of those three budget deliberation sessions, I think Council President Hunt wanted to have a discussion with all of you about some of her ideas for moving that process along. And maybe I'll pause there and turn it over to you, Council President Hunt, for a discussion, to start off the discussion about what your ideas are for that process.
Okay, thank you. I think that one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this forward for council's discussion right now is that we do have some changes in the proposed budget schedule. There are fewer meetings than in the past year. And there is also, we're transitioning eventually to a performance metric-based way of budgeting, but in this year, we're not quite ready for that yet. And so, in addition to eventually transitioning to a biennial budget, we also hope to transition to a performance metric-based approach to budgeting. And this will be a year in which we're not quite there yet, but still have that mindset. One of the, one of the concerns that came out of the budget last year was the number of questions that were about individual council members needing to understand information for their own learning, but not necessarily that would affect the way that they would decide on a vote. And so, one of the ideas, which I would like to put forward for council, is that we, this year, we have fewer meetings that we're going to be deliberating in for the budget in the proposed schedule, and that in between those meetings, that we would meet in pairs and a group of three and work on reducing our question lists to those that are going to most affect our actual decisions on the budget. And then we can also work with each other to address questions that we might be able to work out amongst ourselves. And I also wanted to check in with council about how they, if they have other thoughts on how we might budget differently this year. And I, with that, would like to hand over to Councilmember Ray, who I know also has some comments.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. My thoughts are fairly limited, but I also have one question, and I think it's a question for Director Goldberg. And are we going to see a budget book that looks similar to what we've seen in past years? Or what's the, how's the budget going to be delivered this year? What's your plan?
So there will be a budget book this year. There will be elements of it that will be similar to last year's, but there will also be elements that will be different, and I think will make it easier to digest the information for the council members. You may recall that we are updating our chart of accounts in conjunction with the reimplementation of Munis. And one of the features of the new chart of accounts that I think is going to make a presentation of the budget information far more logical and easy to follow is that it is going to be all around departments. Last year, you might recall that it was around, and this is budget speak, but orgs or divisions, and it was very difficult to digest everything as a departmental unit. The new chart of accounts and then the presentation of the budget materials will allow us to present the department budgets as department budgets. So you will see a budget for parks, you will see a budget for the police department, and you will be able to point to a single number on a single page that says, ah, the parks budget is worth this amount of money, rather than having to add up a bunch of numbers from different pages. So in some respects, the budget book will have similar look and feel to last year. It will have a crosswalk of major policy changes, getting from 2020 to where we are with the proposed budget. That will look the same, but it will be presented along department lines. We are also categorizing the budgets along the lines of the strategic plan. And you will see tables within each department that not only catalog functionally what is changing in the budget, but also how their budgets are allocated among the strategic plan priorities. And then there will be a section at the end of the budget book that will tie it all together and show the whole budget along the lines of strategic plan categories. So that, that's kind of a brief overview. Obviously, this is only the second year that we've had a budget book in some time. There were many years where a budget book wasn't produced. And there are aspects of it that we're continuing to fine tune. I know there are things that I want to do for future years that we're not going to be quite there yet. Presenting fund-level information with forecasts is something I want to get to in future years. Not there quite yet, so it's still a work in progress, but I think you'll find this to be an improvement over last year's presentation.
Great, thank you. And then I too would like to know what the other council members think about breaking into smaller sub-teams to work through the budget. And, you know, and then, you know, Council President and I did not talk about this, so I'm a little off-script here. But, you know, we could even talk about focusing in different areas, teams focused in different areas. But I think there's a lot of ways to do this, but we're trying to figure out how we can minimize the amount of time that we spend collectively hashing through this stuff and see if we can essentially divide and conquer this work a little bit better and develop a little deeper understanding. So I'm anxious to hear your thoughts.
Okay, we have a question from Councilmember Martz, and then we have several other councilmembers asking questions after.
Thank you, Council President. This is Councilmember Martz. Two questions. What is the intended, if we have subcommittees, these groups of two or three, what's the intended public engagement in terms of access to the public and televising and the ability to retrieve the information later? That's the first question.
Thank you. I will take, I will give my impression, which is that when I, when I was thinking of this as a way that we might work on the budget, I think if people are interested in doing this, it would be to see, in my opinion, and actually, it sounds like Councilmember Ray might have a different take on this. My idea initially, which can be changed, is that you would work with another council member or two council members. And the questions list that come out of that work, you could work through on seeing if you have similar questions or seeing if there are questions that you could answer for each other even. And so, it would be much more about making sure that, it'd be much more about working through that. So I don't think it would be a public process. So I don't think it would be a public process, in my opinion. It would be more sort of like a way to work with council members to tailor those lists down, and that if it is about learning, that we could, a councilmember who's been through a budget process before might be able to answer those questions. Again, open to, open to what council thinks would be the best way to do the budget a little bit differently this year.
Okay. And then, thank you. Then my, my second question would be, what is the argument for fewer deliberation sessions this year?
I will, I will hand that over to City Administrator Bob Kowits, I believe, but I did want to also just add one additional thought on my last answer, which is that the questions, if the questions are coming forward as things that we need to discuss with council, then that obviously becomes part of that public process that is brought back to council. So questions that we can't answer for each other would be, would become part of the public process. We would send those in, and we would have to discuss them if they're going to be affecting our budget process. So I think that's, that's important. And City Administrator Bob Kowits, if you could address the question about the calendar.
I think there's probably a series of answers to that. I think first and foremost, your staff and the administration wants to make the most of all your time. I was new, believe it or not, I'll be here a year in two weeks. And so was brand-new to the Issaquah budget process. You know, my initial observation was, it was a lot of time devoted by the governing body to go through a lot of details. And that, in my experience working in other jurisdictions over 30 years, I had never seen a budget process that was quite so detailed. Certainly councils I've worked with take a lot of time to go through larger themes, go through major issues. And so my recommendation to the mayor and to the finance staff was, let's see if we can come up with a process that makes a better use of the council's time. And I think in our discussions with the council president over the last few weeks, I think she has felt that that perhaps was a good idea, but needed some structure put to it. So the recommendations you're hearing this evening are that next step with the structure behind it.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. I will add, too, that we do have contingency scheduling, scheduled dates, so if we do need additional meetings, that, that is actually possible with the schedule that is here. And, does that address your question, Councilmember Mart?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Walsh has a comment.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. I like the idea of separating out policy conversations from informational items, and I think that's a very useful approach that will keep us from getting off track, because I think we have some very substantive policy conversations during this budget season in particular. And so front-loading those conversations and not getting on to, hey, I need this number in order to understand it, is useful. That being said, I don't know why that requires pulling aside into smaller groups to do so. I think it mainly is about us identifying what our policy considerations are and being able to submit informational requests in a different way, which I think your proposal has, you know, given us a way to do that of tracking the two ideas separately. So my preference, I think, would be to follow that procedure without having to have breakout groups that necessarily will have some policy conversations outside of a public sphere.
Okay, thank you for that. We have a comment from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So in, I'm going to let Councilmember Mart correct me if I'm wrong here, but it, I think that we have, in my time on council, every single year, council members, two or three at a time, have gotten together to talk through the budget and budget issues and questions we might have. So we do, do, at least I have participated every year in doing that anyway, and that one of the benefits is that it, it does help answer questions that then don't need to be submitted to the administration. We always have the ability to do that on almost every topic we tackle, except quasi-judicial matters. And so I do think that that's a valuable opportunity that we have, and I intend to take advantage of that. I don't think we should be required to do it. Number two, I, there is a mention, and I'm not, I don't favor at all treating it like a subcommittee process. I think it needs to be as transparent as possible. It's a hugely important task, and I guess to borrow a phrase from, that's often said by Councilmember Mart, it is maybe the most, one of the most important things, if not the most important thing that we do every single year. So for that same reason, I also would not be interested in footnote one, which is an ad hoc committee. I think the idea of ad hoc committees initially was to use those very sparingly. I certainly would not think that there would be, that it would be part of the budget process because they're not public, and that just is not, I just don't think that's appropriate. The Title 18 ad hoc, you know, it's a very long, time-intensive process, and so I think that that is an appropriate one, but I don't think it's appropriate for budget. But I, but I do support the idea, and when I was in council leadership, supported similar ideas where we tried to get as many questions as we could get answered ahead of meeting, sorry, tried to winnow down the number of cushions that we have for efficiency reasons. So I do support council members getting together two or three at a time to talk about the budget. I just don't want to sanction it as any formal process, because the budget process needs to be a public one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I did have a quick question about where the footnote was. I didn't see it.
There is a, page 27 of our packet. It says, per the council rules, one approach is appointing one or more ad hoc committees to serve throughout the budget process.
Oh, I think, I think that's something that's in our council rules.
Right, well, I, and I wasn't saying that you suggested it. I was just saying it's here, so, and I, for the reasons I said, I wouldn't support an ad hoc budget committee.
Okay, all right, thank you for the clarification. We have a comment from Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Madam Council President. Completely agree with Councilmember Goodman. I think the key here is that the sidebars or informational, whatever you want to call them, informational, not deliberative. I think that providing opportunities for council members to ask questions and either have them answered directly or have, you know, some guided thoughts on it, I'm all for that. I think, however, any deliberative activity around the budget needs to be all seven of us and needs to be on camera. When I started on council, somebody's mic is on, but I think it's actually Wally's. When I started on council, it all happened in a back room, and although it was officially open to the public, nobody from the public ever attended, and all sorts of things were said and done in ways that I think would have been different if they were on camera, and thank goodness we live in a different era. So I do like the idea of making time available for all of us who've done this a number of times and for whom this is new, to ask questions. So I think that's great. But really, the key point is informational, not deliberative. And then the second question that I have is really around this fewer deliberation sessions. In my perfect world, if it were up to me, I would, I would schedule as many sessions as we had last year and come up with policies and pacing and a process that allowed us to not have to use some of that time. It is the budget, we only do two things on council, right? We make laws and we write checks, and that's it. And the only time, I mean, the concentrated effort for writing checks is during the budget season. And so I really feel strongly that if we, if we want to have it go in a more concentrated fashion, then, then pace it that way and come up with tools that allow us to move at a faster pace. But the council, the process actually used to take longer. I was kind of laughing when City Administrator Bob Kowits was saying this is the most detailed that's ever been. I mean, Wally, you should have been there when we were arguing over the price of a police cruiser, and we had council members who were arguing whether $40,000 was the right amount of money for a police cruiser. And thank goodness, we've moved away from those days, but I just don't want to rush this process. If we can do it faster, great, but I don't want to presuppose we'll do it faster. When I was younger, Ernest and Julie O'Gallo said, we will sell no wine before it's time. And I want to, I would, as one of seven, have a similar philosophy towards the most, probably the most important thing to do in the year. So those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I am not seeing any more comments, so I think, in summary, there is interest in voluntarily being parts of a small group that would be informational, sort of, you know, figuring out what the questions are that we have that we can't, we can't come, understand the answers together. Again, the, part of the intent here is to separate the informational from the deliberate, deliberative, so that, you know, questions that are sort of factual questions that we, we can answer ourselves. So I appreciate that feedback, I think that all makes sense. And as far as the schedule, I think, as I mentioned, we do have some, some time built in. If the schedule does not provide enough opportunity for deliberation, we do have some additional schedules built in, so I appreciate the comments on that as well. Okay, so on this item, City Administrator Bob Kowits, do you have any additional questions for council, or is this all fairly straightforward?
Council President, members of council, I think it's pretty straightforward. Beth, any comments, questions?
Okay, great, thank you so much.
You will see the budget two weeks from tonight?
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, and then we will move on to our last item, which is ID 0707, Second Performance Measurement Workshop. And I believe this will be presented by Jeremy.
And Council President, maybe if I can just do a quick preamble before we get started. The council was very generous with its time at a previous study session as we went through a variety of the performance measures. We're back this evening with a subset of that. It's our hope this evening to get a general consensus that we're on the right direction. And then the final piece of this would be to come back to you probably sometime in the midst of the budget deliberations in October with a performance measurement plan that would have the measures, which would talk about how those measures are actually calculated, talk about how we will keep the council apprised of the measures, and what we hope to do with the information that we gather. So our goal for this evening is to reconfirm where we're at with this process, and be prepared then to come back to you for one final discussion sometime next month. So Jeremy, I realize I've stolen a little bit of the thunder of your first few slides, but in the interest of time, I wanted to kind of, kind of not bury the lead. So with that, Jeremy, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, thank you for summarizing, Wally. Everyone hear me and see my screen?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, thank you. Tonight I'll be updating you on the performance measurement plan since the first presentation on July 14th. During that presentation, I gave a background on performance measurement, provided different types and benefits of performance measures, and gave examples from other jurisdictions in the region. Tonight I'll be talking about the design process for the proposed measures, then 47 proposed performance measures by strategic goal, and discuss next steps for implementation. Lastly, I'll leave time for discussion and feedback for both the specific performance measures as well as the implementation plan. So departments were, oh, sorry, so included, it's late, okay. So since our last presentation on the 14th, we included the recommendations that council provided, and then we met with departments to identify performance measures across strategic goals, and we highlighted two specific areas for prioritization. One, that data be accessible, so we're prioritizing measures that we know we either already track data for or that we can access easily. And second, we want measures that are meaningful and actionable. And so departments were provided a list of sample performance measures that were designed during a 2014 city effort to create performance measures, as well as the measures that be identified from neighboring jurisdictions. And departments were encouraged to evaluate the list, propose changes to the sample performance measures, and add any measures that better represented the work of departments across the different strategical areas. After departments submitted their lists of proposed performance measures, administration sorted through the measures into the strategical areas and finalized the list of 47 that we're presenting tonight, 46, sorry. So now we're going to present the different performance measures across the strategic goals. Here you can see that the performance measures are pretty equally distributed through the different strategical areas, and there's a total of 46. Before I start presenting the performance measures in each strategical area, I just want to stop and ask the council whether you think it would be useful to present each of the performance measures in a specific strategical area and stop for feedback and comment, or whether it'd be helpful to present all of the performance measures across the strategic goals and then stop for comment.
Council, which, which option would you prefer? Councilmember Mart?
Thank you, Council President. I'd prefer we go by topic, so we do all the performance measures in a topic and then ask if there's feedback questions and do that each time, sorry, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Exactly the same, yeah, exactly the same, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead with that, then. So if you could please give us the opportunity after each goal area to give any feedback, that'd be great, thanks.
Great, sounds good, thank you, Council President Hunt. So we're starting with mobility, and here we have seven different measures. The first one is miles of trails and pathways managed and maintained. Then we have miles of streets maintained, that includes striping, sweeping, paving, and pothole filling. We have average weekday public transit boardings in all stops within the city, citywide average pavement condition index, percentage of housing units within a quarter-mile of transit services, number of van pools that serve employers or residents in Issaquah, and lastly, percentage of residents surveyed that rated mobility type across different areas, so travel by walking, bicycle, car, and public transportation positively. And to clarify, this is a national community survey question, or rather, a series of questions asking community members to rate these different forms of transportation across different levels of positivity. So I'll stop there for comments on mobility before moving on.
Okay, we do have a comment from Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt, this is Chris Ray. Just two comments. One is, it seems to me that citywide average pavement condition index isn't really about mobility, it's really about infrastructure. It seems like a better infrastructure performance measure than mobility to me. And then the second one is, if we go back to the strategic plan and we look at our goal on mobility, is our goal, getting around town is easy for people who live, work, and play here. Other than maintaining roadways, I don't think we have any, any measurements here that talk to how easy it is to get around town in a car. And since that is really our dominant form of transportation, as much as we are looking at alternatives, it's still the number one. And so I would really like to see... And so I would really like to see the pavement index move to infrastructure. And I'd like to see a measurement about how are we doing with vehicular traffic?
Um, is there a, well, is that, is there a metric associated with vehicular traffic in particular?
Well, there isn't one. That's, and that's my question. I'd like to see something, some way that we're measuring the ease with which we can get around town in a car. I mean, I like the others, with the exception of the one that I think is infrastructure. But we don't really have any way that we're measuring our performance there. And I think it's absolutely critical to our community.
Okay, I see. Councilmember Walsh has a comment.
Thank you. Looking back at the Mobility Master Plan, which we very recently reviewed, two of the things that that plan was very interested in were walking and bicycling and other alternative modes of transportation, which they said in some ways were hindered by the lack of bicycle lanes and completed sidewalks. And so those would be things that I think would be important to measure here. The other thing they were very interested in was safety, and particularly looking at preventing accidents. And so I think it would be important to track the number of accidents of different kinds, including pedestrian-involved, bicycle-involved, and whether or not there were injuries versus just damage to vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more comments on this one? And I think the other, the other thing I would ask is if councilmembers feel that there are things here that maybe don't need to be on the list of the performance measures, I would also, I think that that would also be helpful to signal on those because we may be adding. And so as we're going through and adding, if there are things that could drop off, that would also probably be helpful feedback. I'm not seeing any more comments on this item, so I think we can go to the next item.
Thank you. So moving on, we have open development. So here we start with first permit review time, total number of permits issued by type, new affordable housing units created, total number of housing units by type, number of permits or department decisions appealed, number of people who both work and live in Issaquah, percentage of customers surveyed that rate CPD services positively, and lastly, percentage of residents rating new development in Issaquah positively.
Okay, Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. So I think many of these are good and go toward actions we can take. So first permit review time is increasing, we can look to make an adjustment there. New affordable housing units created is less than we would like as a target number, we can take an action there. Number of people who both work and live in Issaquah, I'm not sure there is an actual action that we can take. And so if anything was going to be removed, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, Councilmember DeMichele?
In the Affordable Housing Report that was prepared, I think, in 2017, the number of people who both work and live at Issaquah was an indicator of the availability of affordable housing. And it's a number that's been tracked by both that report and then the Master Mobility Plan also tracks the number of people who both live and work in Issaquah, again, as an indicator for transportation needs. So I do think it's a number that relates to actions that we can take. And it's being used as an indicator in two of our, two of our plans, city plans. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. Number two, number of permits issued by type, and number four, total number of housing units by type. I think those are really interesting pieces of data, but that's not really about performance. If you could tweak those two to make them more about our performance and less about an event that happens that we're tracking, it would be more useful for me. And to pick up on Councilmember Walsh's theme, we could do something if we had something more performance-oriented than just output-oriented. That would be helpful for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Zach Hall. Actually, never mind. That was a really good point by the Deputy Council President. And I think what I was about to suggest is actually just a fun stat to have on hand and not necessarily a performance metric.
Okay. Okay, so I think if we don't have any more comments on this item, we can go to the next item.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. So next we have environmental stewardship. And starting here, we have acres of city-owned parks and open space, number of businesses inspected for pollution prevention, trees planted within city open space and parks, percentage of materials diverted from the landfill, community-wide and per capita electricity use, annual salmon returns to hatchery, and percentage of residents surveyed that rate the natural area preservation positively.
We have a question from Councilmember Hall.
Council President Hunt, that was my previous one, yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I love number six, the annual salmon return to the hatchery. I'd like to find some way that we could show how we're having an impact on that. So I think it's a great, a great one. But as we dig into this, I, we're going to have to figure out how we move the needle on that when there's so many other factors that are outside of our control. So just something to think about as you're putting that together and as we move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thanks. This is Councilmember DeMichele. I'm focused on number six as well. We received comments from Connie Marsh. I don't know, Jeremy, if you saw that email that was sent to us. And her question there was, will we break out the kokani, the wild salmon, and the hatchery salmon? You know, how much detail would that particular metric include? And I don't know if you can answer that right now, but that was a question that she raised that I thought was interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember DeMichele. I, off the top of my head, don't know whether we have data to disaggregate by various different salmon, but I'm happy to look into it and get back to you.
Thank you for that explanation. I can also add that as a member on the YR8 Salmon Recovery Council, I can also, I think that there is data available that could provide additional information on this if we work with our partners. So those counts are being done. So I can follow up on that, too. And then we have Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. Looking at our strategic plan, one of the four success measures was about forest health. And the condition of forest health measure is in development is the statement underneath that. Is that still in development? Is there something that we can do here outside of just how many acres do we own?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Councilmember Walsh. So we currently, beyond that measure, don't have one still in development beyond what I'm aware of that is being worked on. But if there is desire, I can work closer with sustainability to try and figure one out.
So from my perspective, considering we only had four success measures in the strategic plan on environmental, I would expect our performance measures to be able to measure whether or not we're making progress toward what we consider success. So, yes.
I had, I had two additional comments on this one. One is, we've talked extensively about the importance of tree canopy in the past as well. And I think for me, that would give more information than trees planted within city open space and parks. I realize it's more, trees planted is a measure that I think might be easier. But at the same time, canopy, I think, gives us a much more holistic understanding of the state. And trees planted also doesn't give us an idea if trees are being lost for whatever reason. And then I also seem to recall a conversation around tracking how many people are involved in our different environmental stewardship programs. And I wondered if that could be incorporated into a metric, sort of along the lines of percentage of residents surveyed that rate the natural area preservation positively, but more that they're able to participate in environmental stewardship partnering with the city, if that would be a metric. Okay. And I don't see anybody else on this comment and this topic, so I think we can move to the next.
Great. Sorry, I was just writing a note to myself. Okay, so next is social and economic vitality. So first, we have number of businesses supported with startup training and development, then number of business retention visits, total city business revenue, total city jobs, number of human services programs supported through city funding, percentage of human services partners achieving one or more contracted goal, participants attending municipal art fund-supported programs and events, and then a food insecurity measure that includes three components, the number of students supported with free and reduced lunch through the school, number of participants in lunch-for-the-break program from the food bank, and number of recipients of all food bank services. And lastly, percentage of residents surveyed that rate the city's economic development positively.
Okay. I think, is it Councilmember Walsh? I'm sorry, I'm not sure who, which one applies to this item. Okay, Councilmember Walsh?
Well, I was going to add a comment, so I'll go ahead and go. I would like to make sure that these are performance-based and actionable. So I like the idea of the business retention visits. But business revenue and total jobs, I think, are more just metrics and not necessarily performance metrics for the city. So I'm not sure how those play out. And then number of human services programs supported through city funding. I like the concept of measuring how the city is affecting human service programs through funding, but I'm not sure number of programs is the right, or whether it's dollars contributed or percentage of programs supported by city funding. So I would just kind of question whether or not we're getting at the right piece of information with that. Yeah, those are my comments.
Okay. Councilmember Ray, and if I missed you, if you could just indicate again in the chat, that would help. Thanks.
Yeah, I, and I will attribute this one to Councilmember DeMichele. But I think around human services, the better than dollars spent or programs funded is how many people did we serve? So people served or something like that would be, and so bar, kudos, that's a great idea. I'm stealing it.
Okay, great. Thanks. Did any other councilmembers wish to comment on this item? Okay, we can move to the next.
So now we have city leadership and services. So first, we have average police response time by priority of call, percentage of employees, employees trained in racial equity, number of outreach materials provided in another language, demographic breakdown of city applicants, employees, and board and commission members, volunteer hours within parks and community services, department programs and events, debt per capita, and percentage of residents who rated overall quality of city services positively.
Councilmember Marsh.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I think that this year, reflecting all that we've heard from the community, I think we need to consider looking at resident assessment of public safety in the community and so that we can measure, I think we need some ground truth to evaluate all the things that we're doing this year and are going to do next year. If we're willing to look at qualitative assessment from the community in other areas, which we have in a number of other metrics, I think public safety has, we've spent a large fraction of the last six months talking about public safety. And so I'd like to see that metric here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had one comment which applies to this and some other ones as well. But I think for, for number three, number of outreach materials, I think that when we actually have these metrics, it will be helpful to have some, if that's presented as the percentage of outreach materials as well. I think for those where we might not know what is the extent of how much outreach material is provided in another language, having that benchmark would be helpful just for interpretation of those service measures. And I think this applies to some other ones where it's presented as the number or count of something. And that's, that was my comment on this one. And does anybody else have any other comments? I think we can move on. Oh, we have a question from Councilmember DeMichele.
Yeah, Jeremy, I am just wondering, when we talk about demographic breakdown, and of course, that's aiming at, you know, the diversity of our city applicants, employees, board and commission members, and so forth. Do you have an idea of what those demographic categories might be? And the reason I'm asking is, I know race and ethnicity, would it be LGBTQ? How wide would we be casting the net when we're doing the demographic breakdown?
Yeah, thank you for your question. So I would have to check with HR to see what data is tracked. I was initially thinking race and gender. I don't know if LGBTQ plus status is something that we track, though I'm happy to have conversations with HR to figure out what demographics would make sense to report here.
And another area would be employees and boards and commission members with disabilities would be another, another group to track if we can. And those are just thoughts. But I, demographic breakdown to me is such a wide category, it doesn't really tell us exactly what we're trying to measure there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We can move to the next item.
Thank you, Council President. So lastly, we have infrastructure. And under infrastructure, the first measure is linear feet of existing drainage pipe replaced, percentage of catch basins inspected, percentage of the total sanitary sewer system cleaned, number of spills and illicit discharge reports responded to, number of rep-. responded to, number of reports of stormwater drainage issues, number of water main breaks, number of sanitary sewer overflows, and lastly, percentage of residents surveyed that rate public infrastructure positively.
And we have a comment from councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is councilmember Walsh. Looking at the strategic plan, one of the success measures was asset maintenance deferral rate. It says quantity and value of maintenance that is deferred. I'd like to be able to get to that metric here because that is definitely something that can be actionable.
Anybody else have any comments on infrastructure or questions? Okay, I think we can move on.
So that was the end of the performance measure presentation on specific performance measures across strategic goals. And now I just wanted to quickly go through our planned implementation timeline. So I think this may have changed a bit in the last few days. I know that city administrator Bob Quickx mentioned coming back in about a month to present a performance measurement plan. And so we could shift this first date forward a little bit, but the idea is in October, November, to present a performance measurement plan to be adopted that goes a bit more into depth in performance measurement implementation and use. And the plan is also to map performance measures to potential actions or policies that can be implemented that would impact Issaquah community members. And in December, performance measures will be included in the adopted budget book, and we'll have targets for each of the proposed measures by, oh, sorry about that. By the end of the year, administration will work in collaboration with IT to streamline processes for tracking performance measures coming from multiple sources such as Tracket, PWO databases, and UNIS as well, as design and disseminate a performance measurement dashboard that includes the proposed measures graphically and with a justification section for context and understanding. Then, moving forward in 2021, staff will update the dashboard regularly and report on measures quarterly. I just wanted to quickly show, one of these pictures was in the first presentation given in July, but these are two different screenshots of citywide performance dashboards, the city of Lakewood on the left and the city of Edmonton in Canada on the right, again, organized by strategic goal, and then with specific measures with historical context and, when possible, neighboring jurisdictions for comparison as well, as what I said a little bit ago, with some justification or context explaining the measure as well. So I'll stop there on the implementation timeline and see if there's any comments or feedback.
We do have comments, overall comments from councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is councilmember Walsh. I'm really interested in what comes back to us in a month, because while I think we have moved the needle quite a bit on what we consider a performance measure and what's appropriate for our city, I still, in some cases, I'm having a hard time seeing what action we can take from this. So what I would really like to see when you come back in a month is three columns. Column one is what's the performance measure, which you've listed out here. Column two is why are we measuring it, or what, what is the intent from it? And column three is what action we can take to influence it. And I think that will help us weed out some of the things in here that may not be performance metrics, they may just be metrics, or they may be performance metrics, but not something that we as a city can have an influence on. And so I think seeing that kind of three-column breakdown will really help us narrow down in some of those cases where we've identified something that doesn't get us toward a goal or something that we can't take action on.
Comments, councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. Following up on councilmember Walsh's comments, if we could go back to the food insecurity numbers, yeah. You know, it bothered me even before councilmember Walsh was explaining that we had the number of students supported with free and reduced lunch, because that's actually a school district number. And I know that that is one of the ways we measure our food insecurity area, but to councilmember Walsh's point, what would we do about that if that's a number that we don't like? So anyway, just, just a thought. It, it just, the number of participants in Lunch for the Break, that's something we can do about, do something about. The number of recipients of all Food Bank services, that is something we can do about. I don't know what we can do about the free and reduced lunch program with the school district, so that's just a comment there. Overall comments, I wanna commend you, Jeremy. I think you've done a fabulous job, and I think these are much clearer and well-organized, and I think that we're really on the right track, and I wanna thank you for all your hard work. I really appreciate the thinking behind this, and I, I do think we're on the right track. We'll get there when we finally adopt them, but thank you for all your work and good thinking on this project. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. This is councilmember Mart. Yeah, I, I wanna plus one. This long road, it, it's been a decade that we've been talking about metrics. We're close, we're not there yet. Let's do it. Implement these. Get going. Get a couple years' worth of data, five years' worth of data. I wanna still be living in the city when most of these metrics have a decade's worth of data. Maybe we don't keep all of them because some things change over time, but, you know, I wanna see us cycle, close the loop back, get, get these implemented, then get a year's data under our belt and understand what it says about our community. So this is, this is a good update. We're not there yet. Let's, let's get these in place and get reporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I am not seeing any other comments. Thank you, Jeremy. And I, I also wanted to let you know and let any viewers know, I apologize that I did not call for public comment, but I do understand that there's nobody signed up on this or the previous comment, and that there's also nobody, public, no public, members of the public calling in at this time. So I wanted to apologize for not calling for public comment, but also let you know that nobody was on the line. And then I also wanted to use this opportunity to indicate that on the earlier items, we did receive some emails, but they actually were spoken to directly by the people that emailed in those comments, so they were able to speak for themselves. And we did receive one email on the second performance measure workshop that was a detailed feedback on the metrics, which we received an annotated version of the metric document, which I would like to acknowledge at this time. And I am not seeing any more comments from councilmembers, so city administrator, do you have what you need at this time on this item? Actually, maybe, city clerk, do we, is there anybody wishing to call in on this item? I just wanna check.
There's no one on the public on the call at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right. I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you. We'll come back in a month. I appreciate the comments and the council's sloppiness, and we'll be back in a month.
City clerk, do we call for good of the order at this meeting?
Yes, it was included on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. I will offer a good of the order then if anybody, any councilmember wishes to speak at good of the order. Okay, and I'm not seeing anybody. So thank you all, and thank you all for everybody watching. And with there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 10:10 PM. Thank you.